I'd like to call an order, the February 26th meeting of the Sebastian City Council. If you would rise, we're going to have invocation by Pastor Seth Goldsmith of the Coastal Community Church, and then we're going to do the Pledge of Allegiance led by Councilmember Hill along with the Civility Pledge.
Dear Father in Heaven, we come before you and ask for your guidance this evening. We pray for peace and respect and wisdom to reign here tonight. We pray that the decisions made and the conversations that take place would be in the favor of the residents of this town. We pray your blessing over each and every one of them, the businesses, the families, the children, the elderly, the sick. Father, would you please bring your healing to this place? And we ask that it would bless from here, that it would reverberate from this chamber out into our community. We pray in Jesus' name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'm going to read the Civility Pledge. We will be respectful of one another even when we disagree. We will direct all comments to the issues. We will avoid personal attacks.
Thank you for that, Councilmember Hill. Okay. Let's have a roll call, please.
Mayor Dodd.
Here.
Vice Mayor Maude.
Here.
Councilmember Gilliams.
Here.
Councilmember Hill.
Here.
Councilmember Paris.
Here.
Thank you.
Do we have any agenda modifications anyone would like to make? Somebody's phones ringing, please? No agenda modifications?
Yes.
Okay. We're on then to Proclamations, Awards, and Brief Announcements. And... Deagle, the people who go and swan. I'm going to read this, but I don't know if, I'm thinking most of you know about the Meals on Wheels program, but it's a great program that delivers hot meals to seniors and disabled people, and it's a great asset not only to Sebastian but to the whole county. So I want to thank you. Whereas Meals on Wheels, America established the National March for Meals Campaign in March 2002 to raise awareness about the escalating problem of senior hunger in America. And whereas this observance of the March for Meals Campaign provides an opportunity to support Meals on Wheels programs that deliver vital and critical services by donating, volunteering, and raising awareness about senior hunger and isolation. And whereas volunteer drivers deliver nutritious meals to homebound seniors and individuals with disabilities along with caring concern and attention to their welfare to help them maintain their health and independence and avoid unnecessary hospitalizations and/or premature institutionalization and provide powerful socialization opportunities. And whereas the Meals on Wheels programs in Florida deserve recognition for the contributions they have made and will continue to make to local communities and the state and our nation. Now therefore, I, Ed Dodd, Mayor of the City of Sebastian, do hereby proclaim March 2020 as March for Meals Month in the City of Sebastian, and urge every citizen to honor our Meals on Wheels program, the seniors they serve, and the volunteers who care for them. In witness thereof, I have here unto set my hand and cause to seal the City of Sebastian to be affixed this 26th day of February 2020. Congratulations.
Thank you. I'm Karen Deagle. I'm the CEO with the Senior Resource Association. And during the month of March, we join thousands of Meals on Wheels programs across America raising awareness about senior hunger and isolation. So whether you like it or not, you're all getting older. You just know it. But two key factors that influence our health and the aging process are nourishment and socialization. Senior hunger and isolation are serious problems in our community. Food insecurity affects seniors differently. Even if a person has the money to purchase food, they may not be able to because of lack of mobility, functional limitations, and/or health problems. These reasons can prevent older adults from eating properly. In 2019, Senior Resource Association provided 137,142 meals to seniors in Indian River County. Our homebound meal program helps alleviate isolation and hunger. A hot nutritious meal is delivered by our staff and volunteers to our clients five days each week and offers two frozen meals on the weekend. All meals are planned and evaluated by a registered dietitian to ensure it contains one-third of the daily nutritional value necessary in a diet. And last year, SRA delivered 73,335 meals to homebound seniors in Indian River County. But we all know that this program is more than just delivering a meal. It's also that daily wellness check. It provides seniors and their families a sense of security, and it saves lives. A visit by a friendly Senior Resource Association volunteer or staff member is, for many seniors, the only socialization they experience. Our Meals on Wheels program also includes social congregant meals, which is perfect for mobile seniors who are not able to prepare meals on their own or who simply enjoy the company of others. And last year, we delivered, we provided 21,656 congregant meals in five different locations throughout the county. We do have emergency Meals on Wheels, and it's a program for seniors who've been discharged from a healthcare facility within the last 30 days. A hot nutritious meal is delivered daily for two to four, six weeks at no charge while they recover. This program is funded completely through philanthropic funding. And last year, we delivered 2,049 meals to clients through this program. And lastly, one of our favorites is our Pet Meals on Wheels program, which provides our clients' pets with the right type of food so that the clients don't share their food with their beloved pet, which, as we all know, is not good for the pet either. And this also takes away from the nutrition our clients need. So overall, again, because of our generous volunteers and donors last year, we provided, again, 137,142 meals to seniors in this community. This daily feat could not be accomplished without the dedication, time, and effort of over 115 volunteers on a weekly basis. However, please note that there is still so much that we need to do with this program because right now, today, there are 181 seniors who are on a wait list. They have said to us, "We need to be fed. We would like to have a meal every day." And we can't provide that, not because of capacity, but because of lack of funding. The cost to feed a senior with this program is $3,000 a year. And on March 23rd, 24th, and 25th, SRA is hosting the Champion for Meals, which is a wonderful opportunity for community leaders and individuals and members of our community to experience the gratification of delivering a nutritious meal to our homebound seniors. And I know many of you have participated in the past, and I'm hopeful that you'll want to do it again and join us again, a visit from a few of our clients, to a few of our clients who do not have the opportunity to get out of their homes and would love to have a visit by a special guest like you. Thank you again for the proclamation.
You're welcome.
And allowing us to talk about this program and raise awareness for seniors and Meals on Wheels. So thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you very much. I'm sure, I feel like the father of the bride or something, walking out with the flowers. But we have a special award for Tia Maria Lofredo. Did I say that right? Okay. Would you please come up? I'm going to give you these.
Thank you. You see who's giving them, okay?
Yeah, no pressure. Okay. If any of you go down 512 in the morning on the eastbound lanes, and you see someone walk out into that traffic as it flies by at about 45 miles an hour, actually 60, but it's supposed to be 35.
Twenty, twenty, twenty.
Walking out there to try to stop cars so school kids can get across the road. All right. So this is the State of Florida 2019 School Crossing Guard of the Year Award. It's an extra mile award. Now, I'm going to try to name it again, okay? Tia Maria Lofredo?
Iofredo.
Oh, it's Iofredo.
Yes.
I understand that. Sebastian Police Department. This presentation is made for virtual service in protecting Florida schoolchildren. As a school crossing guard, you ensure the safety of children across the state by facilitating their safe journey to and from school. Your dedication for your duties, the schoolchildren, and the community you serve are commendable. With appreciation for a job well done, this award is presented the seventh day of Florida, February, it is Florida, February 2020, for the Crossing Guard Appreciation Day. This is signed by the Secretary of Transportation for the State of Florida. Congratulations. Do you want to talk? We have a... Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Thank you, guys. Councilmember, please. I even had a cheat sheet, and I didn't say her name right. Councilmember Gilliams has completed the Institute of Elected Municipal Official Certificate of Completion for his, for the elected official training course. This is her certificate for that. Councilmember Gilliams, your certificate. Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Do you want to say something?
Sure. I just want to thank all my friends for coming out tonight. Thank you.
All right. Okay, we're on to the brief announcements. I'm going to wait till the crowd cheers down a little bit. Chief Morris. The chief has a brief announcement she'd like to make.
Sorry, I was being social.
Okay.
I was asked to make a statement about some concerns where some of the citizens have been expressing some concerns over safety at our polling places based on some national issues. And I just want to assure everyone that the Supervisor of Elections, Leslie Swan, as well as all the law enforcement officers in Indian River County, we are all prepared. We practice how to deal with any concerns and any security issues. So I just want to make sure that especially our citizens feel comfortable. They are going to be safe coming out for early voting, which begins in March.
All right, good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Now, one little plug before I go on to the stuff that's in the agenda. You'll be seeing these all over the town soon. This is the census year. And just for everybody in here and anybody who's listening to understand that every uncounted person represents $1,700 a year in federal money that does not come back to Indian River County. Those are federal funds for streets, for highways, for storm projects, for other projects. Indian River County was more than 5% undercounted, yeah, no, more than 20% undercounted in 2010. There are estimates that in the three-county Treasure Coast area, that was $2 billion of federal money that didn't come back in the three-county area. It's a lot of funds that we can use for a lot of things. So please, take care of your census people. When they come around, do they mail it, fill it out, send it in. And if they come to your house, don't give them an unduly hard time. They protect your data. There's nothing being turned over to the police, nothing being turned over to the government, nothing like that. So that's my spiel on the census. Pelican Island Water Festival is on March 7th in Riverview Park from 10:00 to 4:00. It's a very nice festival. Everybody would be, would miss it if they don't go down there. The Presidential Preference Primary, early voting, starts in the council chambers on March 7th through March 14th. Because of that, our first meeting in March has been canceled. So that's because of the Presidential Preference Primary. The Presidential Preference Primary Election Day is March 17th, and the polls open at 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM at your precinct, not at City Hall. So if you vote early, you come here. If you vote on the March 17th, you go to your precinct instead of coming here. Okay, now, we're at the public input thing, and I'm going to admonish everybody. That word sounds strong, but it's really, really not. Councilmember Hill read the Civility Pledge, and I'm really very sensitive to try to maintain that. So if you speak in public input and you have something that you want to say, you can say it, but please be civil, because I am going to gavel you down if you're not. And you can say whatever you want to say. Everyone in here has the First Amendment right to speak. Just when you do, please be civil in your comments. Don't be attacking. Don't be threatening. And it will make everybody much happier when this takes place. So if the first hand that I saw was that lady right back there, you, yes. And if you would, since there's a lot of people I think are going to speak, I don't normally do this because I don't like to do it, but would you please line up along these seats here? And we'll bring you in instead of out of the queue when you come through.
Mayor Dodd, if I could real quick.
Yes.
You might want to let the people know that if you have, if you have an issue that you want to speak to that's on the agenda, then you'll have the opportunity to speak to that issue when we get to it. So this item is for anyone that wishes to speak to anything that's not on the agenda currently.
Thank you, Councilmember Hill. That was a good point.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
One other thing. If we can get their full name, their address, and everything, so we know who they are, and if they're...
Please, please, please. No interruptions from the crowd, please. Okay. We need that for the record, anyway. So just your name. You don't have to give your street number, just your street... Okay, now, because there are so many people here this evening that may want to speak, I typically don't hear very strongly to the five-minute timer, but tonight I'm turning the clock on, okay? And I'll let you know if your time is up. And, you know, I tend to not want to interrupt people's ability to input.
Thank you.
But I do have to kind of stick to the clock a little bit, so.
I understand, Mayor Dodd. And I do know the rules. Cindy Geezy, resident of Sebastian for six and a half years. My husband and I have been active members of the Indian River County Taxpayers Association since we moved here. Sadly, Sebastian is underrepresented, underrepresented at the monthly meetings. Though City Manager Carlisle presents an excellent State of the City report yearly, the Mayor of Felsmeir attends every single meeting with his, his, what are they?
Suspenders.
Suspenders, thank you.
Yeah.
Mayor Dodd, Vice Mayor Maude, former Mayor Jim Hill, if any of you would like to be our guests at the next luncheon meeting on Wednesday, March 11th, please contact me. The program is a debate with the county commission candidates. But don't let us be the only Sebastian people there. Two, I like former Vera Beach Mayor Val Zudans very much, but I wasn't in favor of his sending a letter on city letterhead to San Francisco without council approval. The letter itself was well-written, well-thought-out, and did get approval from the council after the fact. But the idea that a new Sebastian councilperson, uneducated and perhaps illiterate, could send their comments to anyone on official city letterhead is frightening. I would like the three of you to take steps to enact a rule that communications must be approved when presented in your official capacity. I am filing charges against two recent candidates with the Ethics Division of the Florida Elections Commission. I have all the relevant facts and financial filings. This many sheets high. I will keep you apprised. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Next person, please.
Hello, I'm Diana Bolton, and I live on George Street. I just want to give you some kudos, encouragement, and I have one question for you. I know it's a tough job. I want to, I just want to tell you that I really appreciate the civility and decorum you have brought to the Office of Mayor. And I also want to say thank you, and I think that a lot of us don't get thanked enough for the hard work we do. And I know that you're not doing it for the money. I know that you guys are doing it because you love our city. And I speak for myself, but I know I speak for a lot of people that are afraid to come up here, and that is, thank you for your service. Thank you for what you're doing, and I really appreciate it, and we really appreciate it as our town. I want to say thank you to Environmental Specialist Kimberly for pushing all the progress she's doing on the Sustainable Sebastian and also on the pesticide workshops. I also want to say thank you to the National Resources Board, who are getting more involved with Sustainable Sebastian and pushing through some of these healthy initiatives for our city. I want to thank Dr. Graham Cox with his Stop Spraying Initiative, and also the new council members, Charles Maute, Pamela Paris, Damian Gilliams, for pushing through our Stop Spraying initiative from the bottom of my heart. And also, I thank you all for putting together the pesticide workshop, where four of our five council participated, and we really appreciate that interaction, and also the fact that there's so much good talent in this town and so much intellect, very smart people that just want a peaceful life and live by the golden rule. Mayor Dodd, thank you for bringing civility and decorum to the Office of Mayor here for Sebastian. And thank you all. And I just, I do have one little question, and it's an easy problem to solve. I also brought some samples, and that is on the issue of the children's playground. I'm speaking on behalf of the children now. And we have, we're using shredded tire chips. And as we all know, that's bad. It also gets up to about 170 degrees. There's three parks in town where the little ones would be rubbing around in tire chips, which are, I could read you the science on it, and we all know it's bad, and it's being replaced in other towns. And I was wondering if we are going to have an initiative here to replace the tire chips on the three parks that we have here.
I'll let, the city manager just heard you, and we'll have some conversations about that. I remember when that was put in, and it passed all certification tests when it was put in, I know, but that doesn't necessarily mean things haven't changed on that.
Yes, it used to be a good idea, like AstroTurf and all those things. And now they're rolling it up because they realize it's bad, it's toxic waste. And on the reef, the artificial reefs that we've made from tires, we're now having to pull those back up as well, finding out it wasn't such a good idea after all.
Yes, all right, thank you.
Thank you very much, Mayor Dodd. Thank you, councilmen and women.
Good evening. Tim Borden, I'm on Fatima Court in Sebastian, and I'd like to talk to you guys about the playgrounds a little bit. As a newer father, I got a little boy who loves going to the playgrounds a couple afternoons a week. And as of the last couple of months, I've seen a little ants coming in here, a little bit there, and then before you know it, they've overtaken a couple of them, or starting to overtake them. I appreciate the pesticide ban and what's going on, but I believe that was kind of a knee-jerk reaction in a way, because now our children are suffering with the playgrounds. And until there's a solution for the, for what you're going to spray, you know, maybe we get to treat it one more time before they really go downhill, and we're not going to be able to utilize the playgrounds at all. So just a suggestion, I think you guys really need to consider spraying them until there's something that's put in place to keep the bugs and ants away. I mean, literally, the kids are getting eaten up now. I invite you guys to go check out Riverview Park, Hardy Park, and you can see them starting to overtake it. And it's to the point where I can't even take my boy to the beautiful playgrounds that we have anymore.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Council. My name is Robert Stephen. I live at 150 Concha Drive. I'm here to thank our new council members for the no-spray ordinance that's been put in place so that we get a chance to work on this. And we're working on this for a long time. The country's up in arms over, not just our country, many countries, and we're finally getting there. And I did want to bring up the, the county came and talked with us about the, how they dealt with their parks, and they're mowing twice a week, not using any herbicides and blanket spraying, and they're surgically dealing with their pests, which means they're going right after the nest. So maybe if we put a little flag up, like we see in people's lawns, the people that are mowing the grass, if they see a mound, maybe we can put a little flag up, and then Brian's people can go on and surgically deal with those pests, so it's not a problem. But again, I really want to thank you guys for what you did, and I'm looking forward to a good year, and we can work out these problems. Man's on the moon. We can do this, Mr. Mayor. I know we can. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, and thank you for this time. My name's Tracy Cole, and I'm a Sebastian resident. I'm speaking on behalf of a group that I formed about 10 days ago online called Sebastian Voters Against Gilliams in Paris. I want to let you know we have about 680-some members. We are not, because we are private citizens, willing to give up our right to have our backgrounds, our backgrounds. We're not public entities, so we don't want to do that. And we have that right. So I was so encouraged at the last meeting when you guys were like so into the domestic violence opinion of the guy that had the nonprofit organization. And then on Saturday, councilmen showed up to our gathering on US1 and gave out false information on it, and said they would fight it to the very end, and didn't say it was for an information building only. So last Saturday, there was given out false information, and it was called a shelter instead of just an information place. A council member has been taped saying they were their watchdog, also false counsel, were voted to represent us. Watchdog is, was not on the ballot, to my knowledge, only a city council. We did not vote for any watchdogs. We can handle that. We think that the city council are representing us, and so we don't want a watchdog. We have been intimidated by false accusations of law that we could be fined $500 apiece for signs that we had. The law advice was given from a non-lawyer and given falsely to residents here in Sebastian. And perceptions of reality, it was used as a tactic of threats and wasn't taken that way. I got to meet, for the very first time, Councilman Hill, and I've been accused of being in cahoots with Councilman Hill. Never had met him, never had talked to him personally, nothing. I knew no of his acquaintances. Saturday, I met him for the first time, so I can assure you, we are not in cahoots. Just a great-grandma had a concern for the voters and the residents after the last meeting, especially the frustration levels and the not knowing that they could do anything and not knowing what their rights were in order to do this. So I started the group. The only person I asked was my husband. That was it. And I didn't get clearance or go ahead by anyone else. I also would like to make sure that the council members stop calling the voters names.
Okay, I want to interrupt you a second. Can you finish in about 30 seconds, please?
Has it been five minutes, sir?
Yeah, it's been four and a half, yeah.
No, but...
It goes by quick, I'm sorry.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir, it does. I wanted to go by the threats that... We think that the city council are representing us, and so we don't want a watchdog. We have been intimidated by false accusations of law that we could be fined $500 apiece for signs that we had. The law advice was given from a non-lawyer and given falsely to residents here in Sebastian, and perceptions of reality, it was used as a tactic of threats and wasn't taken that way. I got to meet, for the very first time, Councilman Hill, and I've been accused of being in cahoots with Councilman Hill. Never had met him, never had talked to him personally, nothing. I knew no of his acquaintances. Saturday I met him for the first time, so I can assure you, we are not in cahoots. Just a great grandma had a concern for the voters and the residents after the last meeting, especially the frustration levels and the not knowing that they could do anything and not knowing what their rights were in order to do this. So I started the group, the only person I asked was my husband. That was it. And I didn't get clearance or go ahead by anyone else. I also would like to make sure that the council members stop calling the voters names.
Okay, I want to interrupt you a second. Can you finish in about 30 seconds, please?
Has it been five minutes, sir?
Yeah, it's been four and a half, yeah.
No, but...
It goes by quick, I'm sorry.
Yes, sir, yes, sir, it does. I wanted to go by the threats that were made on my husband's and my home, and that we are insured. A council member was concerned about our home and our assets. I can assure you, they are insured. I don't know what the threat exactly was for, but not appreciated at all. And so that in itself, can I pass my notes on, or can people give me their time?
No, they can't, I'm sorry.
Okay, can I pass my notes on for them to read?
If someone in the audience wants to get up and finish what you're saying, as long as it's not a coordinated effort, I have no issue with that.
My request for a change of seats, these two to change seats, to build the trust back in the...
Okay. No, no applause, please, no applause, please.
And we also want them to sit, we want you to sit in the same chairs we are, to encourage not napping during the meetings.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Tracy.
Please, keep the applause down, please.
Hi, my name is Christopher Nunn. I'm from Sebastian, Florida. I've raised all my children here. I have seven. I have three still in school now. The other four have, have left the home, some going to teaching, some in the Navy. I have a lot of concern for this city. I want to say thank you to Mayor Dodd and the council members, Hill and Mahdi, for your sustained hard work and moral leadership. We appreciate that. Tonight, I want to address a few things. I am one of the leaders of Sebastian Voters for the recall of Councilmembers Gilliam and Paris. It is a local resident group of concerned citizens that want competent and moral leadership in our city council. We no longer accept bullying, intimidation, or constant lying from our elected officials. They need to be held to a higher standard as our representatives, as they should hold themselves to a higher standard of behavior. I find it funny how these days, when a person doesn't want to own up to their actions, words, or illegal activities, they call out, "I've been hacked," like somebody else did what they did. Please know, the city's watching your moves, and we will not stand for it. It's ridiculous. Everything we have posted on our page has been factual information, most of it from public record searches. We don't make things up, we don't call people names, we don't bully, we don't allow hate or nastiness on our page. It has a goal and a focus. The last thing I want to mention while our group of concerned citizen voters goes through this process, intimidation and threats will be taken seriously. If everybody read Gilliam's paper that he put in the back of the room, the last two paragraphs basically were threatening, threatening that he's going to bring something to us for trying to do the right thing for our city. That's unacceptable. I'm sorry. Intimidation and threats will be taken seriously. I speak for our group, and they are concerned about the behavior of some and possible retaliation for working with us for a better Sebastian. Just know, your city is watching you and your actions, and this behavior will not be tolerated. We are a peaceful group and want to do what's right for the city the right way. Also, as you accept your certificate for the required ethics class tonight, I suggest you spend some more time reviewing that information so it's more familiar with you. As a last note, you could resign and save yourselves the embarrassment. Thank you, Mayor, for your time.
Thank you, sir. Please, please. Ladies and gentlemen, ladies and gentlemen, ladies and gentlemen, I don't, I really don't want to have to tell you again, no applause, if you would, please. Dr. Cox.
Mr. Mayor, council members, I'll, John Cleese act here and say now for something completely different. My name is Graham Cox. I live at 1213 George Street. I want to do two things tonight. One is deal with, echo the comments from Diana and from Bob Stephen, to say thank you for what you've been doing so far and taking action on all things to do with pesticides. I appreciate that. I'm talking to you as a resident of the city and also as an advisor to the Natural Resources Board Subcommittee on the Herbicide and Integrated Pest Management business. The Subcommittee has met three times in two weeks, the latest one being a chunk of this afternoon. We've seen for ourselves the problems and the issues at Barber Street and at Friendship Park and at other number of the neighborhood parks. We have a tight schedule to prepare the Integrated Pest Management Plan for the parks and for the recreation areas. The draft is to be complete by April 1st. We're looking at pests and alternative means to deal with them, starting with the herbicides and pesticides that are available that are non-toxic, and working up to recommendations and alternative control methods. Brian Benton will give you an update later in the agenda, and I know you'll be all ears to hear that. I'm convinced that Brian, Kim, and the park staff know what they are doing when it comes to dealing with the pests on the Barber Street Park and Friendship and all the other parks. They should be, they should be controlling pests and particularly fire ants, and the subweb worms, the most immediate problems. Now is the crucial month to deal with these pests. Otherwise, it sets back the whole work schedule for the coming months and maybe the year. It will also cost much more to catch up. I'm going to suggest, and this is the controversial part, and I'm waiting for something to drop on my head, I'm going to suggest that after you have heard from Brian, that you consider lifting the ban on pesticide use in the parks and the recreation areas with following conditions. That we must stick to the IPM schedule, and the Subcommittee must stay active beyond the April 1st deadline to get it done, to look at longer-term solutions, to look at alternative chemicals, to look at non-toxic means, to look at alternative biological, cultural, and mechanical means to control the dozen or so weeds and bugs and mice that are making the parks and the areas that are suitable for kids and adults, adults to play in. Today, we had valuable, had valuable input from three residents who, I think are here to, I think one of us right behind me, Mr. Powers, retired golf course superintendent. The council will not be meeting for another month, and this is a crucial month for Brian to get his job done. I hope you can unanimously agree to let Brian and his team do their job. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Cox.
Patrick Powers, 252 Barbosa. I'm a golf course superintendent, PGA, Boca Raton, several clubs down there. I attended the Subcommittee meeting this afternoon, and I'm here to help. I commend you all for doing the IPM. It's critical, it's necessary. With that being said, it is physically impossible to implement and develop an IPM program in six weeks. In the meantime, your parks are going to suffer, the children are going to suffer, things are going to suffer. If you want to continue the moratorium on glycoslates, roundups, things like that, so be it, there's any number of other products that can be used. In the meantime, we're having this council meeting, there's, retail is selling those products, homeowners are using them, so it's kind of irrelevant. I can only say, failure to suppress anything right now is not cost-effective. It's going to start costing you more money. The parks and the turf is going to suffer and things like that. I went to Clemson University, and while I was at Clemson University, I want to relate a story that the Department of Transportation implemented something called Kudzu in an attempt to suppress erosion. And now today, the law of unintended consequences is, they can't get rid of the Kudzu. So let's look at this in a common sense way. We'll work towards it. I will attend as many of the meetings as I can. My assistance will be willfully given. So I'm asking you, please, give Brian, he's great, these people know what they're doing, and give them the opportunity to develop this program, but do it in a common sense way.
All right, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Hold one second, please. Sir, the first one in line, there were people back there in line, can you just go back to the back of the line if you want to? Yeah, thank you.
Hello, my name is William Pelletier of Lobster Terrace here in Sebastian. I thank you, Mr. Mayor, council members, for allowing me to speak tonight. I've been a resident of Sebastian for the past 15 years and a homeowner here for 12 of those years. I'm the proud father of four beautiful children who have grown up here, all attending Sebastian Elementary, Sebastian Middle School, and Sebastian High School. My youngest will be attending there as a freshman next year. So as you can see, Sebastian is where we call home, and we're not going anywhere. I am a former employee of the City of Sebastian for seven years, and I got to know many of the residents as such. I have been a Cub Scout leader for our community, a baseball coach, and I'm a current volunteer for the Sebastian Sharks Football League. As you can see, I have had and continue to have many reasons to be interested in our council meetings and the decisions that are made here. I've witnessed many changes in, as my time in Sebastian, the changes of the city attorneys, city managers, the mayor's seat, and many of the council members. I met Mr. Gilliams several years ago, as he was at most every city council meeting there was, and he appeared to be quite knowledgeable of our current events in our city. As Mr. Gilliams began to run for a seat in our council, I voted for him. Not once, not twice, but several times, I voted for Mr. Gilliams. Now here we are, only four months into this term, and I must say, I am ashamed, I am embarrassed, and I'd just like to say that, like Ms. Paris, I too would like to change my vote. Thank you.
Thank you. Ladies and gentlemen, please.
Ben Hocker, City of Sebastian. I've been here 12 years. I've seen many council members. 12 years isn't a long time, but when you come into a city or another place, you have a different view. You see things that people in the town take as common. There are several people that have been fighting to resolve a lot of those problems, and I won't go into problems, but I watched this council, I've watched you, Mr. Dodd, the mayor, as a council member, you've changed. You've changed within the past three months. I don't know if it's for the good or not. I see two new council members. Everybody is beating up on Pamela. I haven't seen her do anything other than, as Mr. Hill says, "Don't believe the internet, the web, because it's all lies." Well, I started to read some of it. There's a small factor in the city here, and started by the Vero Lake group, which have nothing to do with our city, to impede or impeach or restrict or change two of our council members. They have to look at the record. This is a small handful of people. I don't know what their ties are to what their reasons are, but I see nothing wrong with the fact that the new council member is asking questions about city financing. What do we do? How do we do it? Why do we do it? As an example I'll give, we put a pickleball court in. Everybody's talking about it, how great it is. First of all, it's built incorrectly. You don't build a tennis or a pickleball court going east and west, so the sun is in everybody's eyes when they play. You build it north and south. The next question is, why do we take, and I believe, I may be wrong on this, but we will be paying rent to the golf course for the pickleball court, and the golf course pays rent to the airport. We're one in the same. Why are we taking monies from one to another to another? Kind of an odd question, but I've done a little looking into it, and that seems to be the trend. I don't have an answer for why we do it. But we've got a group of people now running around town, all over the place, not giving two people that have dedicated their time and the votes from the people that put them in office to doing what we sent them up there to do, take care of our city. And now, a small faction group led by I don't know who, but it seems that it's just a little puff in the breeze on the unreliable internet. That's about it. Again, I believe the questions that are being asked by the two new members and even the three, the three members are valid questions. We've had other council members here that I've seen put through the ringers. Eugene Wolf fought four council members through his whole term. Why? We threw out a council member because they asked too many questions in the town hall. Again, this is going to be number three and four? No, we voted them in. That's our right, they're in there. Small faction group doesn't mean anything. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. No, no applause, please.
My name is Bill Flynn. I've been a member of this community for 35 years. I run two businesses, and I've had a house here for 35 years. The city has grown tremendously. It's a beautiful place to live. I wish it was more of a secret so we could keep the small-town feel. I like the, I have an issue with what the gentleman said about a group from outside of the City of Columbus, or the City of Sebastian. Most of our members are inside the City of Sebastian, and I was outraged with a Facebook post that Ms. Pamela had on her website and the behavior of Mr. Gilliams, and that's the last meeting. His behavior is not what we want to have in a city council meeting. I don't have anything personally against them, but their behavior, they're supposed to be setting an example for our community, and the example that they sent sure seems, does not look really good to me. We have high standards for our group. If anybody acts disrespectfully of either of these two, we immediately remove them from the group because that's not what we're about. We're, we're here to inform the voters of what is going on in city council, and I think that's something that you all would want more, more voter participation. On the subject of spraying, why can't we take one park and try the ideas rather than cause all the parks be overran with fire ants, web worms, and stuff like that? It just doesn't, until you find a mix that works effectively for the community, why would we, the playgrounds and the softball areas and stuff, my grandkids play there, they get bit up, just like Tim said with his kids, with his child. We're a nice community, we pay a lot of money to maintain these parks, and we need to do something to get rid of these pests. So I'm not against change, but let's do a structured change with proven results. I fish, I want the lagoon to be helped, to be healthy. I like to catch snook and trout like a lot of us do, so I'm not against change, I just want effective change.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
My name's Klessen Heeman. I'm at Columbus Street, and I wanted to address how at the last meeting, Mr. Gilliams made a big deal about the news to the attorney, how there needed to be transparency and there needed to be an investigation, and I believe that should apply to everybody setting up there. So with that being said, I think with the Facebook post that Ms. Paris made, let's start there with transparency and an investigation, and then also, let's have transparency and an investigation with the cellphone that got everything erased from it. Taxpayer dollars are paying for that cellphone, so let's start with an investigation with those two things, and then we can have transparency with everything. That's all.
Thank you. Mayor.
My name is Judith Evans Gallagher. I lived on, I live on Holden Avenue in Sebastian. I don't think that I'm the only one here that's concerned with the behavior of council and residents, and I'm here asking for all of us to behave more responsibly. To me, to start suggesting a recall of the voters' will with no provable incidents of malice, malfeasance, or incompetence is just a very dangerous road to take. We could be doing this forever, every time we have an election. People were elected for a reason, by the majority, and again, unless there is something provably criminal or something that would indicate removal, I really think that this is a dangerous way for us to go. The council has been in the papers recently in a way that has been embarrassing, and I believe that the council is here to serve Sebastian. I believe that the council is here to serve Sebastian, not anyone's agenda, and certainly not anybody, any particular person's ego. I would like to see the meetings be productive, with legitimate questions answered, not sidestepped, and discussions should be civil, and we shouldn't have to be reminding each other of that. And, Mr. Mayor, I really do think it's your responsibility to moderate these discussions and keep them on track and meaningful. In closing, I really just wish that I could ask you folks to do your jobs, earn our support, and do right by this wonderful city. And I would like to also ask the citizens of Sebastian to do what's right for the city, and to think about the consequences of some of the actions that are being proposed. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, council members, I'm here to address the invasive pests, and particularly the red ant problem. I sit on the Integrated Pest Management Advisory Committee, as well as the National Resources Board, for the last three and a half years. Brian and his crew of professionals are exactly that, professionals. They need, you know, they're trying to maintain our recreational areas to the best of their abilities, and right now, they're being hampered by the ban, and I know that nobody wants glyphosate in our community, and we've, on the Natural Resources Board, have been, you know, spearheading that effort for a long time, but, and he's not going to be spraying glyphosate on our plain surfaces, but the longer we wait, the more it's going to cost the city. The green products that we've explored so far, and they are out there, are not cheap, and neither are the mechanical abilities to destroy fire ants. So there's going to be some budget things going that we're going to have to approve, but as Dr. Cox says, we've got complete confidence in the, in the city's, what they're doing over there.
Thank you.
My name is Russell Herman. I reside at 586 Redwood Court. Members of the city council, last November, voters of Sebastian elected three new council members, replacing the three incumbents whose term had expired. This was a ballot system where the three highest vote-getters out of six candidates would win the three seats. Charles Morning had the highest vote totals, followed by Pam Paris and Damian Gilliam's. The good citizens of Sebastian, given six choices, chose their three best candidates. They defeated some really fine people, who had served the city very well, but had also badly handled the public enlightenment process, before voting to annex the Graves Brothers orchards into the city. So they lost the election. Charles Morning has credentials from a life experience as a developer and public service on the Sebastian Planning and Zoning Board. That board was deadlocked on the annexation approval, so by law, it was not approved by that board. Pamela Harris brought her experience in the real estate business, civil service on the Sebastian Property Owners Board of Directors, and a personal involvement with the environmental issues. Damian Gilliam's brought his experience as a longtime local businessman, years of studying and commenting on Sebastian government operations, and asking questions, so that the residents had knowledge. Re, what was happening in Sebastian? Of the two remaining city council persons, Ed Dodd agreed to be mayor, to provide some recent experience on the city council. It was hoped and expected these two remaining council people would shepherd the new council members, to introduce them to the nuances of dealing with council policy matters, and providing direction on the rules and issues to the city manager. New Mayor Dodd publicly expressed his determination to make this new council perform at its peak. See Larry Reisman's reporting in the Press Journal. But there is a problem with the expected help from Councilman Jim Hill. I believe he is involved with organizing a campaign to smear two of the new council members, Paris and Gilliam's, using the subterfuge of the local internet website, street demonstrations, and personal confrontations with other folks involved with the growth of the city. He now calls for a recall vote with no demonstrated basis. He's trying to remove their votes from the city council. This approach is a disgrace to him, to Mayor Dodd, to the newly city council members, and to the good citizens of Sebastian, who voted for these new people. For this activity, Mr. Hill, I believe, is the one who should be removed from the city council. We can speculate on his motivation, but the behavior is simply not acceptable, no matter what the motivation. His apparent smear campaign does not appear to be based on the diversity of experience the three new council members bring to the table, but some irrational notion that they are not worthy to sit on the council. It's just plain nuts.
Good evening. I'm Pat Mandell. I live on Carnival Terrace, and I want it to be known that I am not for the recall. I'm against it. But if we are going to talk about recalls, why aren't we, why aren't we recalling people like Mr. Hill, who seems to be involved in this recall? He tried to sneak the botched up annexation past the citizens of Sebastian. Why aren't we outraged by this? Then when people heard of it, he decided that citizens would have three minutes each to address the council, and Jeff Bass of the Graves Brothers could have unlimited time. And why aren't we outraged by this? Mr. Hill also said that spraying chemicals in our waterways was more than fine by him. Why aren't we outraged by this? When council members held two town halls to discuss integrated pest management for our city, Mr. Hill didn't show up for either meeting. Why aren't we outraged by this? The three new council members are all about fixing the botched annexation. They're all about treating our waterways with environmentally safe products, and they're all about transparency, as evidenced by the town hall meetings, and listening to Sebastian citizens' input. They welcome us, and have been listening to us, a big difference from what we had before. Thank you.
I'm Larry Mandell, from Carnival Terrace. You know, we can, we can all, we can, we can, you know, personally dislike people, we can dislike their policies, and everybody says stupid things all the time, but that is not a reason for anyone to be recalled from a duly-elected position, elected by the citizens of the city. So, I mean, everybody had their opportunity during the election to present their cases, and these people won. And the reason they won were the two main issues that Sebastian voters were interested in. One was the annexation, and the other was the pesticide spray. And during that time, before the election, the sitting city council really ignored what the people were trying to tell them, and they voted through the annexation, despite what the city was telling them. So now we have three new members. The election spoke for the city. Now, if you don't like them, there's another election. You can remove them in the election. That's what elections are for. They tried to do that with Trump, right? They tried to remove Trump. They tried to impeach him, but they said, no, the only way to really do that is to speak during the election, and remove him through an election. I think we need to follow the same rules here, and I think we all, as, if we're all readers of the Bible and believe in Christian thought, we need to remember that, "To he that has no sin, let him cast first stone," because we're all, we're all guilty of, you know, we just need to be civil. We need to be civil. We need to just do the work of the city. When we come here, there shouldn't be any, all, everything that's personal should be left at the door. We should just be talking about city business, trying to figure out what's best for the city, what's best for the community, what's best for the citizens of Sebastian.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Louise Cottenberg, and I do live in the city of Sebastian, and have lived here for just about 26 years now. I have been a faithful volunteer for the city on numerous committees over the years, and I am a faithful attender to council meetings, and I just want to tell the audience, who perhaps might be experiencing this for the first time, this is nothing new, folks. But there have been some misleading things said here tonight. For instance, there's an implication that citizens have been restricted in speaking to the council. In the 26 years I've been attending meetings, citizens have never, ever been prevented from speaking from council. Not once, not ever. As long as you follow the rules, you're able to speak your mind, whatever is on your mind, and whether everybody likes it, or everybody doesn't like it. Always been the case. As far as a recall election, that is a legal process promulgated by the state of Florida. If people want to do it, that's part of America. Go for it. And those people who are so concerned about it taking away their rights, all they have to do is show up at the recall election and vote their own feelings. An election is an election is an election. So if you all feel that the new council people are doing a wonderful job, and there happens to be a recall election, just show up and vote for them. Thank you.
Does anyone else want to speak? Okay, now, I'm going to move on in a second to the, to the- Mr. Mayor. One second, please. Community Redevelopment Agency, but I want to say something first, that I should have said before I did public input, and I neglected to do that. This past week, there was some vandalism done at Councilmember Gilliam's home, on a couple of cars, and something done, I believe, in the foyer of the building in which the real estate business is located, and I just want to let people know that that's absolutely not acceptable behavior, as far as the city's concerned. The city police department is going to investigate, they are investigating, if they can find who did it, they're going to prosecute, and none of us up here want to see that kind of activity take place anywhere in the city. The individuals who are involved in the recall are, they have absolute right to do that. They have an absolute right to go through that process, and we have to respect that. Individuals who are, do not feel that they should recall it, have to respect that, too. So I just want to make sure that everybody understands that vandalism like that is not acceptable from any place in this, in this process. Now, Councilmember Gilliam, I prefer you speak during your matters, as opposed to addressing public input, since we don't really usually address public input during the time. If you prefer to do that, it would be matter?
Yeah, I'd like to follow the precedent that's been set for the 30 years I've been coming here, so I'd like to take five seconds to tell this community how I feel, and how my family's disturbed, that I came out to meet, and I'm totally for recall. If it's justifiable, I came down there, I'm more than happy to show you how to do it. But shame on you if you come to my home the next day and start throwing eggs and vandalizing my vehicles and my business. That is disturbing, that is unacceptable, and I will not tolerate it. For though, excuse me, I sat here quietly.
Please, ladies and gentlemen, ladies and gentlemen, please.
So I'm not accusing anybody. What, excuse me, let me finish. Let me show, I showed you respect.
Ladies and gentlemen, would you please?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I appreciate that. So, I would not ask anything of this community that I would not offer. My home address is 713 Laporte Drive, Sebastian, Florida, for 30 years, and I'm a resident. And if you want to come to my home, just call me. If you want to come to my office, I'm right here at City Hall. I have a phone, I have an email. If you have a concern, call me, but don't come to my home at 5:30 in the morning and start throwing eggs. That's disturbing, and I see people out there laughing, and I find it disgusting. I'm here to serve my community, and I will not be shut down. I have a right to speak, I'm a duly-elected official, and I will play by the rules, and I'm for recalls, and I will show you how to do recall, but I just hope it's justifiable. Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor.
You're welcome. We're going to move on to the Community Redevelopment Agency. I'll have my own comments about this during my matters later in the meeting. So I am now going to recess the city council meeting and call to order the Community Redevelopment Agency meeting. We have, I think, like, six items on the thing. The first is the approval of the February 26, 2020 CRA minutes. Do I have a motion on that? Move approval. Oh, second.
Second.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes 5-0. All right. City staff, would you answer the first one?
Yeah, Mr.-
You want to wait for a minute, there's a lot of people leaving.
I will, yes, ma'am.
Let's let them.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, this, we have several septic-to-sewer grants. I think our message getting out that the county is going to not pay the ERUs after April 1st is the message is getting out, so I appreciate the people getting these septic-to-sewer grants in. Just to give some background, the majority of this program is funded. Lisa Frazier had gotten a grant from the Indian River Lagoon Council, and we need to get those monies spent, and we encourage people to, again, come to us to get the septic-to-sewer grant and convert over. It's a 75% city-funded, 25% resident-funded, and it's based on whether it's septic to gravity sewer or septic to horse mane, so please get with our planning and development staff and apply. So with that, I would like the council to consider 1644 North Central Avenue, Richard and Kathleen L. Kelly, for a grant total amounting not to exceed $3,375. And all the paperwork and application has been reviewed by staff.
Okay.
Mayor Dodd, I move approval, I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman.
Go right ahead, go right ahead.
Chairman.
Yes.
I move approval of the grant application up to the maximum allowed.
I second it.
Okay. You have an approval and a second, any questions about that? Let's do a roll call, since there's money involved. You have questions?
Polycomic.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Is anyone in the public like to speak on this matter? Seeing none, now we'll do the vote. Roll call, please.
Vice Chairman Motti.
Aye.
Mr. Gilliam's.
Aye.
Mr. Hill.
Yes.
Ms. Paris.
Yes.
Chairman Dodd.
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you.
And the second one is the hall, the hall residents?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, and it is a $3,000 grant, 1662 North Central Avenue.
And this one is a, okay, yeah. Any questions, or do I have a motion on this?
Move to motion to approve.
Second.
A council, a motion by Councilmember Gilliam's, and second by Councilmember Paris to approve this. Any public input on this? Seeing none, several roll call, please.
Mr. Hill, Mr. Hill.
Yes.
Mr. Gilliam's.
Yes.
Ms. Paris. Ms. Paris?
Here. Sorry, yes.
Yes, okay. Chairman Dodd.
Yes.
Vice Chairman Motti.
Yes.
Motion carries. Motion carries. Thank you.
And now the grant request for commercial space at 1698 North Central Avenue. Does anyone from the public have comments on this?
Move approval.
I'll second that. Any comments from the councilmembers? Roll call, please.
Mr. Hill?
Yes.
Ms. Paris?
Yes.
Chairman Dodd?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Motti?
Yes.
Mr. Gilliam?
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you.
Okay, now, this is the Sebastian Community Center on 1805 Central Avenue, and this one, I believe, involves a force main?
No, this is all gravity. That whole door section along Central Avenue was the new gravity sewer that was installed.
All right. So this project is actually a city project. I did have a question about this, about using... And I don't know... I mean, we've got... After we look at the last one, we've still got $160,000, $170,000 in grant money available to us. But I have kind of have a question about using grant money on a city project as opposed to...
We use grant money all the time on city projects. That's how we built the waterfront, we built Riverview Park, we built a lot of that with other governmental grant monies. This is a park recreation facility, the CRA is a separate fund, parks is a separate fund, and the Indian River Lagoon Council's supplementing these costs.
Okay. Does anyone in the... From the public have anything to ask about this? Have a motion?
Make a motion to pass.
Second it for discussion. Real quick, Mr. Mayor?
Go right ahead.
I see that there's an easement. I just want to make sure that easement... Because I know we had problems in the past with easements on Indian River Drive.
Mr. Mayor, may I?
Yes.
So we had to dedicate this easement because we own the property behind the community center, and to run that force main, we need to make sure it's a maintainable utility easement in case the city ever decided to do something different with that property behind the city. If the city chose to sell that property, we wanted to make sure that we maintained access to that sewer main, if that answers your question.
Thank you.
Any other questions? We have a motion, I believe it was Councilmember Malte, and Councilmember Gilliam seconded. Roll call, please.
Ms. Paris?
Here.
Chairman Dodd?
Yes.
Oh, let's go back and... Can you say yes or no?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Vice Chairman Motti?
Yes.
Mr. Gilliam?
Yes.
And Mr. Hill?
Yes.
All right. And the final one of these is at 608 Davis Street. Anyone in the public want to address this? See none. Do I have a motion on this?
Make a motion to pass.
Second?
Second.
All right. Many... Any information from the councilmembers? Any questions? None? Let's have a roll call on this. Please, this is a motion by Vice Mayor Malte and seconded by Councilmember Gilliam.
Okay, did we call public input?
I did.
Okay, thank you. Chairman Dodd?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Motti?
Yes.
Mr. Gilliam?
Yes.
Mr. Hill?
Yes.
Ms. Paris?
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you.
And as the city manager said when we kicked this off, I know this was done pretty quick, but we're doing everything we can to try to get all the septic tanks east of US-1 and on US-1 destroyed and done away with, because they are directly dropping contaminants into the river. They're that close to the river. So the reason this program is so important is because of that. And the city is donating a lot of money to do this, and Indian River Lagoon Council has given us $200,000 grants so far.
Two separate grants.
Two separate grants for $100,000 to do this. And it's very important we go forward. So if anybody out there lives in that area, please come forward, because as of the 1st of April, it's going to cost you more money to do this conversion, because the county utilities is going to quit waiving that impact fee as of the 1st of April that they're currently waiving on this.
Mr. Mayor, that's about $2,500 per ERU depending. So that's cost that we may not... Council may not want to cover because they had an opportunity to have that waived by the county. So please implore everybody to come and get these grants.
Yeah, you have about a month to get this process through. Did you have something to say? Okay. So please, if you live in that area, do it. It's very important that we get these septic tanks done away with, and we have funds to deal with that. Okay, now I'm going to recess the Community Redevelopment Agency and call back to order the city of Sebastian council meeting. And now we're moving on to the consent agenda. I believe Vice Mayor Malte would like to pull item B.
Correct.
On the consent agenda, would anyone else like to pull any other items from that agenda?
Move approval of items A, C, and D.
Second.
All right. Motion by Councilmember Hill and seconded by Councilmember Gilliam to approve A, C, and D. There are funds involved in this, so roll call, please.
Vice Mayor Motti?
Aye.
Councilmember Gilliam?
Yes.
Councilmember Hill?
Yes.
Councilmember Paris?
Yes.
Mayor Dodd?
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you.
Okay, Vice Mayor Malte on B.
I have a question of this item. Do we know how great of an area this is going to cover, the concrete?
So the estimate from the stormwater staff is this should take care of the driveways that need to be addressed for the roads that we pave. So as we do these paving projects, we address the drainage issues on the roads that were paved where needed, so that we don't reverse the process. The money we invested in the paving doesn't get destroyed by flooding. So this should cover the roads that we have resurfaced this year.
But that's for the driveways. Do we know how many driveways that will include at this time?
I don't have the total number, sir. I do not have that total number. Ken, do you have that number? I can get that for you all, but I don't have the total... I do not have the total number of driveway culverts that have failed.
Could you get me that information, please?
I can.
Thank you.
I absolutely can. I'll make sure all the councilmembers get that. Absolutely.
Mr. Mayor? Charles, did you want to put this on hold until you get those numbers?
Yes, I would like to put that on hold.
Okay, would you please make a motion to table this item, and then we can move forward with it?
Correct. I make a motion to table the item.
I'll second it.
All right. We have a motion by Vice Mayor Malte and seconded by Councilmember Gilliam to table item C until our next meeting.
I have a question for staff, please.
Yes.
Is this going to hold up some projects? Because we don't have a meeting for another 30 days. Is this going to cause us any problems in getting some of these projects that we need to get going started?
I don't know that this will be detrimental to the project. These are budgeted funds that was in the budget to be done. You know, we don't want to go back and redo stuff, but there's swell work that could be done in lieu of doing all the drainage pipes. I just don't want to do all the swell work to drainage pipes, then back up the flow into the swells and undo what we did with the grass.
So I guess another question is, this is budgeted, right? So this doesn't exceed anything that's in the budget. This is not to exceed. So if it goes beyond what the actual cost is, then it'll have to come back to council.
Correct.
And this is also lowest bidder. Is that correct?
Yes.
So for the concrete, that actually is an agreement that actually went out for bid last year. So there were two contractors that were awarded on the bid.
Correct.
And this is actually somebody who we are contracted with that actually was awarded the contract.
Right. So this is actually a not-to-exceed. It's for doing work that's budgeted. It's for projects that are already online and that we're going to go forward with. So actually, the number of driveways that it's going to do is irrelevant, because we've budgeted a certain amount, and these projects are going to go forward. So I will oppose this based on the fact that it's really irrelevant how many actual driveways are involved, because this is the lowest cost, and this is a budgeted item, so it's not exceeding the actual budget. So I would certainly favor passing this at this time. Thank you, Mayor Dodd.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes.
I respectfully disagree. I think it's imperative that we know what it's going to cost us per driveway, and I see it's a two-year contract, if I'm not mistaken. And so I'd like to get an idea what the average driveway is costing us to repair after we do the road. So I think Charles made an excellent decision, so I'm for this. Thank you.
Any other comments?
Public.
Okay. Motion by Vice Mayor Malte and seconded by Councilmember Gilliam that we table item 11B until the next meeting. Would you have a roll call vote, please?
Public input.
I'm sorry. Public input, please. Anyone in the public like to address this?
You're tabling it.
I'm tabling. There's no public input.
It'll come back.
Okay.
Yeah. I always listen to what she tells me to do, though. So do I.
I can hear good stuff from here.
It's never a bad thing.
Would you have a roll call, please?
Okay. Councilmember Gilliam?
Yes.
Councilmember Hill?
No.
Councilmember Paris?
Yes.
Council... Mayor Dodd?
No.
And Vice Mayor Motti?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, now we're on to committees' reports and appointments. Integrated Pest Management, that's update by Brian and Kim. And before they start this, I want to thank you guys for this work. This is... For all of you out there who don't understand this, this is absolutely in addition to what they do for a living for the city. So they're not doing away with their entire workload. They're doing this in addition to that, and it's very encompassing.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor, city councilmembers. Brian Benton, he's our services director. And I have Ms. Kim Hagler, who's our environmental technician here as well. Tonight, we're going to give you an update on our IPM, Integrated Pest Management Plan Subcommittee and the current status. The committee had our third meeting today. We are still progressing on our aggressive timeline to be prepared to present an integrated pest management plan for our parks to the city council on April 8th. We received some really good feedback and suggestions on various pests that were identified by staff from our members, and they're continuing to do their research. We have identified some biological, cultural, and mechanical solutions that in the long term will be able to reduce our usage of chemicals. One point that was discussed today is that we need to identify short-term and long-term solutions. This discussion happened because we were discussing some biological components and the timelines on those and how they're going to work within our system. We'll take a bit more of a long-term approach as opposed to being effective immediately. As quite a few of the ideas are going to... We'll see the benefits, so we will need to keep pests at acceptable thresholds until these biological methods can work. Last week, the committee had the opportunity to visit Barber Street to tour our athletic fields and speak with our two certified applicators at that site. We're currently at a tipping point of pests on those fields, as this is the time of year that we need to get ahead of the game, or we'd be forced with dealing with a more difficult circumstance by being more reactive. After that, the committee came over, and we took a long look at Friendship Park. The committee members enjoyed the visit, and I believe it helps them as we continue to go through this process. I'll now let Kim speak.
Just some of the details on the process that we're going through at this point. The committee's received a draft of the first section of the IPM plan, which is the introduction and implementation for their review and discussion. This section includes a schedule for reporting, review and revision, and with community outreach elements. Also, a chemical information form was developed, and it's being utilized to standardize the data collected on all the alternative chemicals. We've reviewed methods of control for approximately 75% of the primary pests of concern, with every method being supported by a body of research. These include description of the life history traits of each, biological, cultural, mechanical, and chemical control methods recommended, consider methods for use on Bermuda turf grass and general park areas, a discussion of each method's costs, benefits, and concerns. And these methods are being categorized as they apply to one of the three types of parks, the active, passive, and athletic. To sum it up, through the committee's research and collaboration at this point, they have come to the determination, which you've heard already this evening from a couple of our members, that the cultural, biological, and mechanical control methods can be utilized to maintain pest populations within an acceptable threshold. These methods are not effective to control populations once they have surpassed this threshold. Currently, many of the pest populations identified on our parks and properties have passed this threshold. Once chemicals have been used to control the problem, then other methodologies such as biological can be incorporated again.
Thank you.
And then we also... Our scientific advisor, Christine Kelly, would like to speak for us.
Okay, good. Thank you.
Good evening, councilmembers. My name is Christine Kelly Wiegaso. I'm the Indian River County Extension Agent for the University of Florida IFAS. And due to the rapidness in which this committee has been meeting in order to bring this plan forward, I haven't really been able to attend any of them, because my schedule fills up very quickly, as many of you probably already realize. But I have been reading over some of the projected documents that Kim has been giving to all their members, and I believe that they're on the path to a very firm, yet reliable plan for implementing IPM in this county as well as in this city. So I'm here to give any kind of educational information that you might want and answer any questions.
Okay.
So that's what I'm here for.
Is that a UF badge that you're wearing?
Yeah. Yes, we are... Extension is in every single county in the state of Florida, and we are a cooperative agency between the Indian River County and University of Florida. So I... We work for the University of Florida, but we also work for the county, Indian River County, as well as any other county in the state.
So who funds you?
Both the University of Florida and the county. For example, most of us are 60/40 splits, which 60% is paid for by the University of Florida and 40% is paid for the county. Different counties have different percentage mechanisms, but the majority of them are 60/40 splits.
Thank you very much for being here.
Christine, I have a question, please.
Yes, ma'am.
Reiterating on Kim's last statement, too. She spoke quick. But, you know, to patronize the parents of concern right now, is there any temporary solution? And from what I gathered, but Kim said it would interfere with our biological process if we were to treat something temporarily now.
No, that's not what she meant. What she said was that once you... There is an acceptable level of threshold. Once you get over that level, then it becomes very difficult to control any of those pests, whether they be weeds, ants, insects, with a mechanical, biological, or cultural control. So you will have to use a chemical control to bring those populations down to where they will be able to be controlled by the other three methodologies. Once you bring those populations down and they can be controlled by those three other methodologies, very seldom do they exceed that to where you'll have to use chemicals again. But as Brian stated, a biological control or an IPM consold program is, it's not an immediate effect, and it does take time. And so when you have your populations at a level where they're at now, where they've exceeded a threshold level that can be easily controlled with other methodologies, then you do have to use some sort of a chemical product. But once you've brought those back down again, then you can implement your IPM program only utilizing those chemicals when absolutely necessary.
Can I ask what we're suggesting right now? Chemical, I know it's not going to be glyphosate, but there are alternatives, Kim, Brian, I don't know where you people are.
There's just all sorts of things, and it also depends on the type of pest. So if you're talking about dollarweed in Bermuda grass, it's something else in comparison to, say, crabgrass in St. Augustine grass. So there's a whole variety of things. And you, glyphosate is a very good product when used properly and judiciously. And the problem that we've run into is something someone alluded to earlier, is these products are so readily available on the market that a licensed pesticide operator has to show his license to purchase these products, but a homeowner doesn't. Now, sometimes they're in a different concentration, but it's the exact same active ingredient. And so even though glyphosate was fast, effective, and cheap, it's been overutilized throughout the United States, throughout the world, actually, wherever it's available, because of those three factors: cheap, easy to use, extremely effective. So there are times in which a product like glyphosate is viable to be utilized in a good IPM program, but it's not the go-to product, and unfortunately, that's what's happened. It's become the go-to product for landscape professionals, for homeowners, and in agriculture. So I wouldn't want you to say that you shouldn't use any product, but utilizing the expertise from your staff, they would make the decision based upon some of their consultations with the University of Florida, some other people that work directly with us that are much smarter than I am in weed science or, you know, pest science, they would come up with the best-case scenario for their IPM plan.
I understand all of that, and I think we've already decided, the public has decided anti-glyphosate, but the staff's doing a wonderful job on the alternative. But I wasn't referring to weed control, specifically red ants is the immediate problem.
Yeah, fire ants, yeah, glyphosate has, you mentioned glyphosate, so that's why I brought that up.
I don't think I did.
Glyphosate is only a weed control.
I know.
So for a fire ant control, they've come up with a couple of different methodologies, and I haven't really looked at the whole plan, so I'd be able to say, but I didn't notice anything that was not acceptable. So, and I would have mentioned it if I thought there was something that was.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Mayor.
Okay, Council, I'm, based on-
Can I ask a couple of questions?
Yeah, oh, you want to ask for a couple of questions?
Yes, yes.
Go ahead, I'm sorry.
And staff, just a couple of questions. So, thank you very much for being here, you know.
No problem.
Love the extension, as you said, you know, I love the work you've done.
Thank you.
Forever. I just have a couple of questions so that people can understand where we're at and how we got it got here. You're obviously aware of best management practices, and I'm sure you've seen this thing about a billion times.
I helped write it.
Right, so this right here is a guide for professionals to use. Real quick, Brian, have you seen this before or something like it? Probably yours is more updated, mine's a 2002 version of it.
Yes, sir. Ms. Christine actually came and she did Green Industry's Best Management Practice. She did the class for our entire staff in the Parks Department, and Kim attended, and Mr. Carlisle and a couple other members from other departments.
Okay, and so anyone who's a restricted-use pesticide applicator would have to understand best management practices and-
Not necessarily. It depends on what they're doing. For example, RUPs, restricted-use pesticides, let me go about putting it a different way. The GIBMP program was developed to address the concerns about the green industry and their management practices. So a lot of times, people refer it actually as the fertilizer license training, but it's not really. It covers six different major components of landscape maintenance practices and how to be more environmentally friendly, of which one is fertilizer application. One is pesticide application.
Sure.
But there's no requirement for license holders of RUPs to take that class.
Okay, sure.
The ones that are required by state law are fertilizer applicators. So if you work for a pesticide company or even a fertilizer company, you're applying fertilizer for pay, then you have to have the license. In order to get the license from FDAC, Florida Department of Agriculture and Consumer Services, for people who may not know, you have to take this class. So I do recommend, and it was recommended by state legislature, that all municipalities have their staff take this class as well.
Sure.
So, but an average pesticide applicator would not necessarily have this class. What they would have is they have to have certain classes and pass a test for their particular license.
Sure.
So if you, most of our landscape professionals have what's called a limited landscape maintenance license, and that only allows them to apply caution-labeled products. So, but with an RUP license, you can apply other things besides caution labeled.
Sure. So Brian, prior to the ban on spraying pesticides in the city of Sebastian, did you use best management practices?
Yes, sir.
So you were already aware of actual best management practices and prior to the ban?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so in this manual that you helped write, Christine, this best management practices is just a guide, right? I mean, because there could be some things that are more strict that aren't necessarily outlined in here.
Correct, and that's the thing, each municipality, county, city determines whether they're going to utilize what's in the best management practices or if they're going to apply something a little bit more stringent. Now, FDAC comes into play because some of this, some of these best management practices guidelines are regulated by FDAC. The GIBMP is one of them. Calcalf operations is another one. Citrus BMPs is another one. Those are all regulated and demanded by FDAC. So if you are going to apply fertilizer for a fee, you have to have this particular class.
Sure, I actually have the golf course one too, so the golf courses-
Right, golf course one too, right.
Yes, so, okay, so one of the things that I find interesting is that, oh my God, best management practices, integrated pest management is a part of best management practices.
Yes.
It's not the opposite. So, so the Integrated Pest Management Plan that we're putting together is just to be a part of the best management practices that we're doing, not the other way around.
Correct.
Okay, so, so thank you very much. So I appreciate that very much. Great information. I appreciate the hard work the staff is doing on this.
Yeah, best management practices look at things holistically.
Right.
And so integrated pest management is part of your management plan, of which belongs under a best management practice.
Right, because, I mean, the best management practices considers what type of plant to put where.
Right.
Whether or not it's going to need irrigation, irrigation spacing, you know, what the least-invasive type of pesticide you should use to control something, and it uses all of those different things to provide whatever the necessary product is the least, with the least environmental impact.
Correct, and that's the whole idea behind the Green Industry's Best Management Practices was to incorporate a plan that would allow for the least or the least impact upon the environment, but still creating aesthetically pleasing landscapes.
Thank you very much.
All right, thank you. Council, thank you very much, guys. Council, I have, I'm a motion, I'm going to move that we suspend the rules and under the committee reports and appointments section that we allow ourselves to take action.
I'll second that.
And the reason I'm wanting to do this is that based on the public comment tonight and based on the information I've heard, I think that we need to consider the possibility of providing Brian a little bit of relief on making sure he doesn't get so far behind on the parks system that he needs to do that, so.
Mr. Mayor, when you're done.
The suspend the rules motion, it doesn't require any comment, I mean, it doesn't authorize any discussion. After we suspend the rules, if it's agreed to, then the motion to do something will be under discussion.
What I'm asking is, you have three new council members up here, and they may not be up to date on the object you just put on the table to suspend.
Okay.
So I'd like to have the attorney just address the other council members.
Okay, I'm, right now, under committee reports and appointments, we are not, we are not, I can do that. Right now, under committee reports and appointments, it indicates no public input nor action expected by a city council member nomination and appointment under this here heading. So we can't do any action items under this heading without suspending the rules. So my motion that was made by me and seconded by Councilmember Hill is that we suspend the rules for the purpose of being able to take action under this heading. If the city attorney would like to address that.
If you're asking the question, it doesn't require debate, but it will require 2/3 of vote per the vote.
Correct, right, so we need four votes to do that. So all in favor of suspending, excuse me?
And no discussion, correct?
And no discussion, yeah, I know, I'm saying, it's no discussion. All in favor, now, I will tell you, just so you understand, what I intend to do after, if, assuming we can suspend the rules, what I intend to do is to have a conversation about a motion to provide Brian some relief. I don't know what kind of relief, there has to be a discussion about that, but to provide him some relief. What I've heard from some pretty qualified people here tonight under public comment, and it was appropriate for them to do it under public comment because there is no public comment under this section of the agenda. What I've heard by some pretty qualified people is that we need to let Brian do some things now, or he's going to be in a situation, if it waits that much longer, that he's going to have more problems than he can deal with. So that's what I intend to do if we can suspend the rules and take action. So all in favor of suspending the rules, please signify by raising their hand. All right, that passion, that motion passes 5-0. Now, Brian, I'd like you to address us if you can before we go further. What I'd like to do is get a feel for what you think that we need to authorize you to do. I, you know, I know we're not going to authorize you to use glyphosate, but you don't plan on using it anyway, so that's not a problem. And I don't want to, I don't think we need to be micromanaging you by telling you what you can spray and where you can spray it, but I think we need to give you some relief so you can move forward.
Yes, sir, thank you. We're currently dealing with the fire ant issue across the city. That's one of the major items. When we went out and did our walkthrough at Barber Street, we, I showed them active areas where there's mole crickets and sod web worms that we have currently. This is the time of season that we have to be, that we treat for those items, because what will happen is you'll have the larvae of the mole crickets, they'll start to go forward, and it's the time, once they become adults, our treatments aren't as effective. And so this is the time that we treat for them. And then also, we're on our Bermuda turf and within the football fields and baseball softball fields, we're starting to deal with a magnitude of different dollarweeds, crabgrass, sedge grass, some torpedo grass and goose grass are all starting to show up. The football fields, we didn't have as well under control when this happened in November, but the baseball fields, that's where they're starting to come back in. And so we can really see what an impact the last three months have had on those items within that, because Bermuda grass was a little dormant, and it gives the, and now we're getting into the warmer time where we can start to see those impacts happening. Within our other parks, I think the major issue is fire ants within all the other parks.
Okay, I'm, Council, I'm going to make a motion. I'm going to move that we allow the Parks Department to selectively treat the pests, selectively treat pests as are needed to keep the parks in shape, but not to include the use of Roundup.
A second.
All right, now we can discuss that. And you guys want to talk about before I do public input?
Well, I would like to know if it was discussed at your meetings that you hold weekly.
If what was discussed, I'm sorry?
The items that we're talking about right now?
Of it being lifted?
Yeah.
That was not, us lifting it was not discussed. We did have a discussion at today's meeting if there were questions that came up about fire ants, what the group, how they thought that we should move forward with the fire ant portion, and basically the consensus in the group for the subcommittee today, they all agreed, and it was unanimous agreement, that we needed to move forward with what we know works for that issue. We do, we have been introduced through some biological, some different cultural ways that we can treat fire ants. We had a great discussion with a gentleman from University of Central Florida today. He's invented a hot water machine, and at the end of the discussion with him, I asked him exactly how he would treat. He said, "You're still going to have to use a couple of applications a year, but you can use this component. It can be one component to use as a control method." So I think we're looking at this Integrated Pest Management Program. At the end of the day, we're going to have multiple different components that all lead us to the end goal in controlling these pests. So in today's meeting specifically, we discussed fire ants, because I knew it was a hot topic. But however, we have already had discussions in the past and at the last meeting in regards to what was taking place at Barber Street and also at the Friendship Park field back here. I kind of showed them that facility back there is all natural, other than our fire ant treatment. Other than that, we had not applied anything there in the past year. So if that was the, you know, the route that, and the all-natural approach, and it was a consensus among the committee members, that for an athletic field, that's not acceptable. And so that's where we saw Barber Street as well.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, was Dr. Cox there at your meeting, and he was in favor of this?
Dr. Cox was at our meeting today, yes, sir.
Dr. Cox said that during public input that he was in favor of it.
He said he was in favor, okay.
I'm going to open this up to the public, how about we do that? Thank you, Brian.
Yes, sir.
If anyone in the public would like to address this issue, please come forward.
Name's Tom Hill, media terrorist. Please no knee-jerk reactions like you did on this. We've got fire ants right here at the Tin's Courts. We've got it around here at the Boys and Girls Clubs. You let it get out of control. Thank you for giving this man the opportunity to get it under control.
Thank you, sir. I don't know if Dr. Cox wants to address it now, but during the public input, he actually brought this up and suggested that we do this.
Okay.
So he can address it again if he'd like, please.
I knew when I suggested it that it could set off a long discussion. We have met, we've had some intense meetings to figure out what do we do next, what do we, these things. We've done our homework assignments as to what pests can be treated in what ways, but we've been very mindful of the fact that when we've met with Brian, with his staff, and with Kim, that we've got to do something now. And I understand the reluctance, and boy, I'm the last one who should come up here and say, "Yeah, go ahead and do all of this, folks." But I've really been persuaded that this is, for immediate purposes, we should continue to, I should not continue, should pick up this issue and use this month, which is a crucial month for all these bugs, all these weeds coming up. And I say, I've been persuaded, and I hope I'm persuasive enough to you guys to support Brian to do this.
Oh, thank you, sir. Thank you. Anybody else in the public would like to address this?
Diana Bolton, during the pest management workshop, we had brought up some other ideas as far as using de-limonene and a citrus-based oil. During the presentation that Brian and Kim gave, they said they tried it, but it didn't work, and it was after four days. I think that, and they tried it on one piece each, so I don't think that was really giving it adequate. What my fear is, is that what we don't want to do is totally lift the ban because we need another fix, which means that it'll just delay us doing the right thing. Fire ants are a problem. If we need to treat those, I agree we do somehow, but I really think that we shouldn't give up on trying something other than the old poison, the old heroin that we've been using. I really think that we need to be actively looking for alternatives that are healthy, including the citrus oil. Whether it takes a little longer, because some of these organic methods do, that's fine, but I don't think that we should just say, "Okay, it's okay as long as it's not glyphosate." Because glyphosate right now, when I first spoke about it a year ago, there was something like 11,000 lawsuits, now there's 47,000 lawsuits, and they're going to take $12 billion to settle all the lawsuits. But that's only one chemical, and there are so many chemicals in these cocktails. And to just say that that's our buzzword is glyphosate, no, there's a lot of chemicals out there that are bad for our environment, and bad for our lagoon, and bad for the ocean. So let's not, okay, we need a fix here, we need it fast. It's only been three months, but really, we've got to be really careful. It's taken us a year to get where we are, and I can't believe if this, these chemicals are so effective, how come we're all of a sudden in emergency status in two months during the winter season when nothing grows hardly, and things don't really tend to grow as fast, including bugs? So we need to really question what we're using and why is it, when you, when you kill all these things, the ibis come through, they eat grubs, so now we're going to kill our ibis. So these are things that we really have to think about. Fire ants, yes, we have to get rid of them. We want to lift a moratorium on fire ant poison, which also on the label, some of the poisons that you guys are using says, "Don't use within 500 feet of any endangered species," or any scrub jays and all the other things we're trying to protect around here. So let's not get too carried away. We've worked really hard to get where we are, and I do not think that we should all of a sudden, "Oh, lift the ban." If we need to do it individually, Brian's got a good common sense approach, Dr. Cox has got some great ideas, but fire ants are a terrible thing. We don't want fire ants, but let's not lift a whole ban and start dumping chemicals again just because of that. Let's treat the fire ants individually, only as we need to, and let's actively look at some other alternatives, because we've all worked hard on this, we've all attended these pesticide workshops. Three universities have also said, they've recommended, three universities have tested this item, and they said it works, de-limonene, which is under several trade names, and I've spent a lot of time doing the research on this stuff and bringing it forward. So let's don't say, "Oh, we need a fix, we've got to go back to our regular poison that we've been using." If we have to do it temporarily, that's fine.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Ben Hockers, Hadia, Sebastian. When I moved here, I found out about fire ants the hard way. My question is, we are doing things at the golf course with the city spraying. The last thing I recall was that we have a golf course management company to maintain and take care of the golf course. I don't know whether by them cutting the grass, do they take care of the insects, the grubs, the bugs, whatever, but a half a million dollar contract to a company, that's the last time I had looked at it, that's about three years ago, and we built them a building and a few other things, but in that contract, being a golf course maintenance company, what have they done for us, or what have they not done for us, and why are we, as the city, adding to the cost of getting rid of weeds, bugs, whatever?
We're not talking about the golf course right now, we're talking about the parks.
We're talking about putting a poison on a plant or a bug.
Not on the golf course, only on the, we're talking about only the parks right now, not the golf course.
We don't consider the golf course a park.
No, it's separate. The whole process has been separated into three entities, golf course, city parks, waterways.
Has anybody asked that golf course management company, though, what they're doing to take care of our golf course? And why are, from what I hear, why are we the city spraying over there and trying to figure out what to do?
We're not spraying, the city does not spray on the golf course. The golf course management company does that.
Did we ask them what they use?
Yeah, we know, we know what they're doing. We know what they're using out there, yeah. The city, the city staff knows what the golf course management company is using.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you. Anyone else in the public would like to speak on this?
Bob Steven, 150 Concha Drive, Sebastian. I was a little bit confused there, it went kind of fast for me. Come here, when you say you're going to lift a ban, does that mean the ban on all spraying?
No, I'm not, I'm not saying lift the ban, I'm saying we allow the city staff to use selective treatments on the parks.
Period.
Period.
Period, not the canals.
Not the canals, this is the parks only, and it's primarily the parks with ballfields in them. He's not asking to do anything, I don't believe, in the passive parks or the inactive parks, but, so all I'm saying is, we allow them to use selective treatments.
As long as we get that clear, we're not going to go back into our canals.
No, no.
Four months-
Four months now, Mr. Mayor.
We haven't even dealt with canals yet. We'll be dealing with them next.
Okay, four months now, we've finally started getting birds back. We still have a dead waterway, but the birds are starting to come back. Now we're gonna work on sucking the muck out. We still got a lot of work ahead of us, so please, don't go back into that.
And I wanna send the blackbirds that are now emptying my bird feeder to your house, if I can get them down there.
We're not supposed to feed birds. If you don't poison the bugs, feed the birds, Mr. Mayor. The environmentalists will tell you that.
I just like those Cardinals.
Don't water your lawn, and don't feed it. The bugs will take care of the birds, and the birds will take care of the bugs. Hey, there was one other thing. We heard the county guy come in here, and he says, "They surgically treat the pests." That means they go to the nest, and they just put a little bit of chemical on the nest, and these things eat the chemical. Wait a minute, wait a minute. Hear me out, Mr. Mayor. You interrupted me enough.
All right.
So they bait these nests, the bugs eat this, they get out back into the hive, they eat each other, and it dissolves it. And I've had the people in Melbourne tell me about this, and they gave me this little chemical to use. And you need less than an ounce to kill this monster tribe of fire ants. Surgically dealing with the pests. County manager cut that.
Okay.
Thank you.
Anyone else in the public would like to speak? Okay.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
On the motion, can you define selective for me?
I'm gonna leave that up. I mean, what I'm hearing from people who...
Can we get staff to define selective?
I don't wanna micromanage, so I'm not, I'm not, I mean, the problem is that we can sit down and say, "You can do the third, third feet of this place, and fourth of that, of that," but I don't wanna micromanage. I'm hearing from people who have been adamantly opposed to what we've been doing and said that, now coming up and saying, "Well, your people seem to know what they're doing. Let's let them fix this problem so we can go forward." And I'm hearing that from people that I think have been providing us very valuable services on this. So I don't wanna deploy their staff. I'm not hearing anybody saying they think the staff is doing anything really bad. I'm not hearing that.
No, but Mayor, I think if Brian could just say what he's gonna use on the fire ants, I think that's the question, pretty easy. Do you know?
Yeah, but...
Do you know? You don't know?
May I, Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
So the question was, what will we use to treat the fire ants? At Barber Street, we would more likely use Top Choice. But then in our other active and passive parks, we would use a fire ant bait that we would just treat specifically on the mounds within those parks, so that we wouldn't have to do a broadcast treatment. We can just do selective, just on those individual mounds. I'm sorry?
Topsoil and what kind of bait?
Top Choice, and we use Avion as the bait, the fire ant bait that we use.
That's what I was getting at. Okay, Mr. Mayor, I wanna help out here, and I wanna vote for your motion. However, I have constituents that are sitting out there looking at me, and they wanna know what, I can see they wanna know what selective is, how many times, you know, can we put some sort of guidelines here so that we keep everybody happy?
Mayor Dodd?
Yes.
If I could, I would suggest that, you know, the advice that we've been given by actual experts and people who know what chemicals we're talking about, and what pests we're talking about, and how to best control them, the people that actually wrote these books about best management practices, of which outlines all of the issues involved in best management practices, that we allow our very, very dependable staff to continue this process while, as Mr. Cox said, and me and Mr. Cox are not simpatico on very many issues, but while Mr. Cox said, we continue to go forward with the Integrated Pest Management Program that we're looking for, and implement into the best management practices that Brian is going to be implementing, integrate the Integrated Pest Management Program into that plan. I know he's already doing a lot of that stuff. I have no doubt. I've spoke with him about these things, and I happen to know a lot about the products and the pests we're talking about, and I know I'm pretty much the only one up here that does. But I don't fault anyone up here for being concerned. I'm glad you're listening to experts who are telling you these things. I've been saying it for a while, but I don't even care about that. All I wanna do is the best thing for Sebastian, and the best thing for Sebastian is to allow our capable staff to do what he's hired to do, and to go out and maintain our parks, and maintain our parks in a way that least impacts the environment. Because guess what? Brian lives here, too. Brian lives in, maybe not in our community, but he lives in Florida, and he lives here, too. We all love our environment. We have children, we have parents, we have all of these people that are affected. The key is to make sure that best management practices are followed. And Brian is, I believe, an expert. I've sat down with him and spoke with him about these issues. He's doing a heck of a job of implementing these best management practices, and I know that he wants to work with everyone in this room on how to improve those. And that's part of best management practices, by the way, is always looking for ways to improve what you're doing. And I believe that the Integrated Pest Management Program and the committee that we have put together with our, who's the board that we have members on, and Mr. Cox?
Natural Resources Board.
The Natural Resources Board. And these are people that deeply care about this community, and I know that Mr. Cox deeply cares about it. And I think that we should allow Brian to do what we pay this good expert and his staff to do. So I fully support your motion. I understand the motion. It's, I'm not gonna question him on how he would control a tawny mole cricket in a Bermuda grass outfield, or I won't ask him how to control tropical signal grass in the same outfield. And those things are important to him. He knows that he has to do at this time, he's probably gotta do some pre-emergent applications, so we don't have to spend a fortune in the very near future and possibly close the fields and make them dangerous for our children. He knows what he's doing. We should allow him to do his job.
All right. Thank you. I'm in favor of that, yes.
Since this is under reports, and it comes back to us, and we could easily suspend the rules like we're doing right now, I don't have a problem going along and voting with this. If you allow me to amend your motion to bring it back every 30 to 60 days for a constant review, and we get a report, we can constantly suspend the rules and proceed with allowing it to go further. Or if our environmentalists tell us on the board that, "No, it's not being handled properly," then we have some recourse to put the brakes to this. So I mean, if you allow me to amend your motion, I can vote for this.
Brian's gonna report, reports on this every, at every council meeting. He reports on the Integrated Pest Management at every council meeting. And I would expect that if we do this, then he can provide a report at that same time on the actions he's taking. I don't have any issue with that. I don't wanna, the problem is, we start putting all these time things, we play these games, and we're not providing the staff the direction they need to take, and we're not allowing them to do their job. That's my issue with that. And so I'm not in favor of an amendment to it. I don't have any issue with Brian coming back and doing a report, which I think he does a good job of doing anyway, when it comes back to us, so.
Okay, well, then I'll make a new motion if this one fails, and we'll see if we can make something, make everybody happy.
All right. So we've had all the discussion we're gonna have.
I wanna ask Brian one more question, please.
Mr. Mayor, if I can, Mr. Mayor, the attorney?
Yes.
If I can, I'm not sure if Councilmember Gilliam, are you withdrawing that motion to amend? Because I was confused, because I mean, you're asking him permission, but were you withdrawing it?
Well, I didn't make it yet. Obviously, you know, I wanted to get his feel, you know, it's his motion that's on the floor.
I wasn't sure if you made a motion. I apologize.
No, but I'd like to hear from Pam, and I may just do that.
Brian, in your expert opinion, when you treat the Top Choice and Avion on the ant mounds that are such a serious concern at this moment, do you believe that they will control the situation until April 8?
Mr. Mayor, may I?
Yes.
I do believe that if we can do these applications, then we will be able to get a better handle on what's happening. And please remember, we're not stopping the Integrated Pest Management Plan process. This is just something that we're at a point now where our thresholds are, in a lot of cases, way above where we need to be. And so we just need to do something now, keeping in mind that our Integrated Pest Management Subcommittee is gonna continue to work hard. We're gonna continue to have that plan back to you for the April 8 meeting. We're gonna continue to look at biological, cultural, mechanical controls, and all that will be included when we get to this April 8 kind of meeting to present that plan.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to hear from Charles and see what his position is on the matter.
Mr. Vice Mayor, do you have anything to say?
I'm in favor of following what Mr. Cox said and letting them take action on it at this time.
Thank you.
Okay.
All right. Any other comments? Let's have a real call, please. Hold on. I made a motion that we allow the city staff to do selective treatments for a pest, which includes whatever, and however that they not use Roundup for any of these treatments, which seconded by Councilmember Hill. And that's the motion we're voting on.
Okay. Okay, Councilmember Paris?
Yes.
Mayor Dodd?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Motti?
Yes.
Councilmember Galliums?
Yes.
And Councilmember Hill?
Yes.
All right. Thank you. That motion passes. I wanna thank Dr. Cox and the other gentleman who came up, because it was, I don't see his red shirt out there now, but it was, I think it was very, very informative that they provided the information to allow us to do this. And I also wanna thank them for their support in this Integrated Pest Management process that we're going through. It's, I've talked to the city staff about it, and I am really, really excited about the fact that we're probably gonna produce something that may end up being used by a lot of places in Florida before it's over with. And it's gonna take us some time to do it, but we're gonna get through this process real well before it goes. Okay, we're now on to, we have no unfinished business, we're now on the new business. Item A, before I open this up to the council, I'm gonna ask the attorney to provide me some input on, there are two ways that we can proceed on this. One is with cause, and one is without cause.
I would like to set back my motion before moving any further.
Okay, well, the problem with, if you make the motion now, before the city attorney makes his ruling, your motion may be out of order.
All right.
So let me let him do the ruling first. Okay. Mr. City Attorney, would you please address us on this?
Prefer, you prefer me to go up, Mr. Mayor?
No, you can sit there unless you feel like you wanna...
Okay, I'll stay here, Your Honor.
All right.
If you guys can out here, let me know, I'd be more than glad. My back does hurt, so I'd just prefer to be sitting down. If I can't, I mean, I was looking at the motion the councilwoman, Paris, put forward, and how I'm reading this thing, it's pretty much, it's for removal of an appointed board member, if I'm reading this correctly, and it's pursuant to our code 2-172. That's how I read the first page. I've also reviewed her, councilwoman, Paris's email of February 14th, and the comments that she's made, and I believe it's a memo or an email from, or a legal opinion from the former city attorney, Jim Stokes, on February 12th. The issue, the initial issue I have, and I've read everything, and I kinda concur right now with what counsel, with what Jim Stokes' final opinion is, and I wanna add to that. What I see at the bottom of that, we're talking about page 79, at the bottom of that first second full paragraph, where it starts with, as Mr. Ovino, this is Mr. Stokes' opinion. I have to concur, but I wanna add to it. It says here that Mr. Ovino has not performed any official duties yet, and it will be impossible to show any misfeasance, nonfeasance, and malfeasance. I've done some research, and I looked at everything, and I wanna add to that based on the statute that I researched, which I do have copies of it, which is Florida Statute 112-51, as well as Florida Statute 112.501. The issue that I have is, in addition to that, when it talks about, for example, abandonment of office, I think that's also one that will probably fall into that category that, since my understanding that he has not started, and I can confirm that, because I actually had a phone conversation with the pension board's attorney, Bonnie Jensen. I've asked her, have they met yet? She says, "No." They've met once on March, I'm sorry, once on December 10th, and then, of course, he was appointed on January 22nd, and they have not had their second quarterly meeting, which is scheduled for March 17. So the fact that they have not met yet, meaning Mr. Ovino's a board member, I assume this is what Mr. Stokes is trying to allude here. I have a problem that you cannot find for malfeasance, misfeasance, or malfeasance, because he's not performing any of his duties, and that's specifically right of our ordinance, it says, "In the performance of his official duties." Also have a problem with the abandonment of an office. I don't see how you can argue a cause for an abandonment of an office if he hasn't even started. The other issue, on top of that, it talks about violation of provision of state law. I researched the state law, and most of the state law that I've researched has to do with the governor removing for either someone who is either convicted of a crime, and, if I can one second, I apologize, arrested, as well as, again, malfeasance, misfeasance, neglect of duty, habitual drunkenness, incompetence, or permanent inability to perform official duties, which is the key here. So I don't see that. And the last one that we have here is conviction, and I don't think he's been convicted. So the issue that I have, Your Honor, I mean, Mr. Mayor, as well as the council members, I think you're limited to what you can do at this point, which is, I don't see it being for cause, based on our own codes and based on the law. The issue, I think, only before you're right now, is whether or not you wanna remove him just without cause. And I believe, according to your code, it requires a supermajority. That's my opinion.
All right. Thank you. Counsel? Yes, you may.
There was no accusation, any way of any kind of moral turpitude or interference?
Is your bike, is it on?
No, I'm sorry.
Okay, yeah, thank you.
There was no issue at all of any kind of moral turpitude or interference with the board member, but I did wanna set back my motion after having a meeting with Chief Morris, because it's understood that volunteers are really hard to get. I mean, just like Robert Betta, which is why I kinda voted him, and knowing how environmentally educated he was, it's hard to get volunteers. And Chief Morris asked, you know, just kinda made it really clear that they need this position filled, so I'm resigning my motion.
And I also add one more thing, and I appreciate the motion. I think last time we had a meeting, I know Councilmember Gilliam has some issue. I also researched the law as well, which is 185.05, which talks about the specific positions. Two are for police officers, two were for citizens that you guys appoint, and one was at law. The only requirement that the law has with the position that the board appoints, and it's at your pleasure, is that they're resident. That's all the law says.
Thank you. So basically, we don't have an issue now?
No.
What's your suggestion? Non-issue. Okay. All right. Thank you, Mr. City Attorney. Since it's a non-issue, then there's nothing for us to decide on 15A. 15B, please, city staff.
So, Mr. Mayor, this is the hangar deconstruction at the airport. This is a heavily funded grant from FDOD and FAA. The city went out and did a RFQ request for qualification, request for qualifications. The Johnson Law was shortlisted and ultimately approved by city council to negotiate with city staff to do a guaranteed maximum price. Through a lot of work with Ms. Fraser and Mr. Baker, we did some value engineering to get this within budget. With all of the construction cost increases, it was difficult, but they worked through the process and were able to work out a design and a construction methodology that gets us within budget. And with that, we'd open it up to questions, and Ms. Fraser's here to answer any purchasing questions you may have.
Any questions from anyone in council?
This might be a little off-tilt here, but do we have a tenant waiting in the wings for this building, just out of curiosity?
Yes. We have a couple people that are interested. One is a current tenant, and they would like to lease the whole building or half the building. So we do have tenants that are interested? so we do have tenants that are interested, absolutely.
Okay, and have we advertised this to let the other possible tenants that may be out there in the world? We didn't advertise it, then?
We have not yet. We have not advertised it yet because it's not built.
Gotcha, I understand that, I understand that. But we didn't, and I know I'm getting a little off here because we're talking about the contract agreement and design and everything. I just want to make sure I understand the whole picture. So we have an existing tenant that showed interest in this particular building when it's completed.
Correct.
Was their specifications done to the liking of that particular tenant?
No.
No.
Not at this point.
Okay, and this is a guaranteed maximum price?
Correct.
So that means later on, if there's a change order, you're not going to come back to us and say, "We have a change order," and it's going to be X amount of dollars, correct?
There's never a guarantee. We have a very tight contingency in this. It's less than 5% I believe. There's, with steel and construction costs, there's never a guarantee that there won't be unforeseen instances. It happens with construction, construction material costs can be inflated at any time, so we can't foresee the future that there would never be an ask for a change order. We just don't know if that would happen. I couldn't guarantee that.
Well, you're talking about materials, and you're saying guaranteed maximum price. I'm talking about specifications, drawings, et cetera, redesign, that's what I'm referring to.
So only if a tenant stepped up and wanted to sign a lease during construction and wanted to do internal construction would that occur? At this point...
How would that be handled?
So if a tenant wanted to negotiate a lease with us, and wanted to negotiate construction of the office space or additions into the hangar, that would be a negotiation between us and the contractor and the proposed tenant, and would be a condition of their lease, which would then be brought back to you.
How are we fair to tenant X, Y, and Z, say, at Vera Beach Airport that may be interested in this potential building, but yet does not know it's being built, and we did not advertise it? How do we handle that?
Well, once we get the building designed and ready to go, we can advertise it for rent, but we'll, you know, we've got two tenants that have showed interest, they're current tenants of the airport, and they're willing to pay the fair market value for it, so.
When you say fair market value, that means you had a certified MAI appraiser go ahead and do an appraisal on the plans, or you're going to do an ASBET when it's completed? How is, how are we going to determine market value?
We'll have to do one on that building, based on the plans, based on the area, but Scott just did a market value appraisal for properties at the airport as part of one of the other leases.
Okay, but we will have a certified MAI commercial appraisal in the file before we lease this building, correct?
Correct.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure that we're representing the taxpayers properly and that we're getting the highest, because I know the last time we discussed the lease down there, we counted it, I don't know, 33%, and they went along with it. And it's important that any of the city assets that we have are properly advertised, so nobody can say, come back to us and say, "Well, I didn't know that that was available." So when you have a maximum guaranteed price, and now you have a tenant waiting in the wings, and then they say, "Oh, by the way, we need to change this and that and this," and now the price goes up, and now we're already negotiating with a tenant, so I want to make sure we stay clear of that. That's all.
Mayor Dodd?
Yes.
I'd move approval to enter into a work services agreement for negotiated GPM, GMP of $2.189 million with Johnson Lux Construction LLC. Award the vendor of RFQ number 19-04, design build of multipurpose hangar and office building at the Sebastian Municipal Airport, and approve increasing the project budget for added grant revenue and using DST revenues for the added city matching share.
I'll second that. Now, does anyone from the public like to speak?
Good evening, I'm John Wilf, I'm in the flying club on Brushwood Drive, and I'm also a tenant at the airport. I represent a small not-for-profit member-owned flying club, and I just want to thank you for supporting the airport and for leveraging FAA money in cases like this where we can help make our airport self-sufficient.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other comments in the public? All right, any other comments from the council?
I do, Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Mayor Dodd, excuse me. Oh, I'd like to congratulate staff on this. This is, again, absolutely fantastic. Federal Department of Transportation is going to be providing $1.75 million to the city of Sebastian for an injection of economic development at our airport. What's happening along in the Space Coast right now is unbelievable. The, all along the Space Coast, from Titusville, Melbourne, and even further north, is exploding due to the space program, the private enterprise that's going in there and utilizing the infrastructure. There's going to be tens of thousands of new engineering jobs in southern Brevard County, and so they're going to need, you know, we're going to need as much light industrial property as we can possibly have. That's going to be premium, so kudos to our staff out at the airport, kudos for getting a good price for us, and I look forward to continuing to improve our economy through development at that airport.
Anyone else?
Yeah, I want to commend the director. It's a nice grant, 1.7, and the money that's coming out of the DST fund, I'm very happy to see that, and I am for economic development down there at the airport. Just a quick question to the attorney. Did you review this agreement, Mr. Attorney?
I have.
You have, okay, and you're comfortable with it?
I am. Actually, I put notes, if you want me, I reviewed, it has all the key provisions that we need, specifically identification, we have all the insurance questions, that we're also additional insured members, as well as, I mean, everything is in there. I can go through my notes if you would like.
No, no, just a quick question pertaining to builder's risk. How much is that policy for on the builder's risk part of it?
I'm sorry, I can't hear you.
The builder's risk, maybe the purchasing agent can confirm that. I see it in there. Goddamn thing.
I don't know how much their policy is, but they're required to cover...
I see you have the bond in there, which is good, a performance bond.
If I can, if I can, it's all on page, is that 90? It's all on page 90, referring to insurance policies. It's all, just the standard language that we have, and also we're named insured, or additional name insured, I apologize, but these are the stuff. Also, there's a warranty, and liquidated damages, which is kind of rare, but we also have that as well, and more important for us is on page 96, which is indemnification, and I always like that language at the end, which pretty much says nothing, "And this agreement shall be construed as city waiving its immunity pursuant to 768," which is our sovereign immunity, so that's also a language that was in there. And public records as well.
So the city manager feels comfortable with the builder's risk policy, correct? The amount?
So they're responsible, and so what builder's risk is, if they bring materials into the job and they get stolen, they have a policy to cover that. The city doesn't have to pay for deliverables on-site.
Yes.
Okay. All right, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, and I want to commend the city staff. As always, you do a good job. Cross your T's, dot your I's. I know you get questioned, but you do.
Thank you.
So thank you, guys. All right, let's have a roll call, please.
Mr. Mayor, I have a question on the other one.
Okay, I'm sorry, that's complex.
Mr. Carlisle, are we doing anything to promote the airport now, more advertising or anything in that field at this time?
So we're working on the website to get that up and running. Mr. Baker's done some good things on getting that website uploaded with our new, we're revamping all the websites, and that'll be the first stage. And when we talk with the group, we're talking about a section where we can look at what's available in the city and what properties would be usable. The second thing that I'm going to be bringing to you is a company called Retail Strategies, and they market, their goal is to market business, vacant businesses in this community, being the airport, the properties along the river, whatever vacant businesses, they go out and they research companies that best fit our demographics and our culture, and they bring them to us, and they deal with the property owners to sell that property. And so we're going to be using that, they'll be bringing that contract to you as well.
Okay, so do you have any timeframe when the airport manager will be getting this website advertising up and running? Is there a time period on that?
I don't have the breakdown of the timeframe. There's several steps. We just designed the page layouts last week, week before last. Content is being transferred over from our website to them. I don't have the exact dates.
Barbara?
The goal is June.
Yeah.
That's the goal.
Yeah.
I was just whispered in my ear.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, did you have a chance to look at the design yourself?
I have looked at the documents, yes.
You have?
Yes.
Is there a reason why we don't get to look at them, or is it, I thought that...
Did you ask?
Well, I thought everything that's shared with one council member is shared with all.
It is, if you would have come to City Hall to look at it.
Jim, have you had a chance to look at the design?
I have all the chance in the world to look at the design, absolutely.
I know you have the chance, but did you look at the design?
No, I don't have to look at the design.
Yeah.
Okay. Well, I just think that I was told that things like this, when one council person sees it, we all get to see it, and I'm a little perturbed that I didn't get to see it. I would like to have seen something, something in my paperwork.
You're not being slighted. Thank you. Let's have a roll call.
Mr. Mayor, the only document that we have for the layout is in the package.
I know that. I'm just not responding very, very much to that comment.
I apologize.
Excuse me, Paul.
Would you have a roll call, please?
Mayor Dodd?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Mahdi?
Yes.
Councilmember Gilliams?
Yes.
Councilmember Hill?
Yes.
Councilmember Parrish?
Yes.
Motion carries, thank you.
Okay, item number C under new business. City staff, please.
So, Mr. Mayor, this is the final closeout for taxiway C. The contractor, Dickerson, had made some errors in their work and were responsible to pay the overage cost of the inspections and engineering. The city received a credit from them of the $34,051, $51.06, and they covered the cost of that overage for the inspections due to their striping company. The other components were some cost increases and some minor additional tonnage of asphalt, and there was some sodding that was done because they, through all that rain and the many times of trying to seed, it was getting washed away, and so we authorized some sodding, which drove the cost up, but it's less, it's about 2% of the entire cost of the project, and understand that 90% of this is covered by FDOT and FAA.
Mayor Dodd?
Yes.
I'd move approval of Dickerson Florida Inks, change order number four, and Infrastructure Consulting Engineer, change order number two.
I'll second that.
I'll go along.
Okay, anybody from the public like to address this? Seeing none. Anyone from the council have questions? None?
I'd like the council to know that I reviewed this item with the city manager, and everything is in accordance with what he said.
Thank you.
So I have no problem with this whatsoever.
Thank you, Ms. Byssell.
And the work we did on that.
Thank you.
Good job, Scott.
Okay, let's have a roll call, please.
Vice Mayor Mahdi?
Yes.
Councilmember Gilliams?
Yes.
Councilmember Hill?
Yes.
Councilmember Parrish?
Yes.
Mayor Dodd?
Yes.
Motion carries, thank you.
Okay, city attorney matters.
If I can, just really briefly, there's no issue, but just for the good of the order, I just want to thank the opportunity for the entire board, giving myself and my family the opportunity to come work with you. It's been, it has, and I've heard compliments from the board on the staff, and for me personally, it has been an honor and so far a privilege, working with every, they might not like me too much because I'm in their face a lot, but I think we appreciate, we have a good working relationship, I have a good working relationship with the manager, and I think it's going to be good, and I look forward to working with all you guys as well, all council members. I know I've met most of all of you already personally, so my office is open, and also I'm available on weekends if you need to call me. Thank you.
Thank you. City manager matters.
So I have two items. One is the announcement that the pickleball complex is complete, and we're anticipating our grand opening March 5th, so I hope that all of you can attend that. Brian has some good things planned for that opening, and glad to get that thing done. His staff and the Stormwater Crew and Public Works and Scott and his crew have done a yeoman's job getting that project completed, and it's a really, really good-looking project. The second thing is, as you know, we put an RFQ out for engineering services to evaluate the annexation application. We received no proposals from any engineering firm. Because that happened, I had staff reach out to the Treasure Coast Planning Council. They're willing to help, and MBV is willing to help in doing the engineering analysis. I would ask staff, or ask council to consider letting us move forward with the Treasure Coast Planning Council. They work for all the communities, they work for the county, they work in conjunction with all of those communities. Just a thought, that's, and that's all I have.
Okay, I, once again, I think this is an item in which we probably need to try to take action this evening, if we can, if it's possible to do that, because we're talking about quite a distance between our next meetings, and it's just something that needs to get moving forward. So I'm going to make a motion that we suspend the rules and that we address this item under the city manager's matters for the purpose of taking action. I don't know what action we'll take, but just for the purpose of discussing it to take action. Do I have a second on that?
I'll second it.
Okay. Let's have a roll call. This is just for the suspension of the rules, so we could actually discuss the item. All right.
Councilmember Gilliams?
No.
Councilmember Hill?
Yes.
Councilmember Parrish?
Yes.
Mayor Dodd?
Yes.
And Vice Mayor Mahdi?
No.
Okay, so we're not moving forward on that. Thank you. All right, city clerk matters. None? Okay, city council members. Councilmember Gilliams?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First of all, I'd like to welcome the city attorney. Had a chance to interview you, and I wish you all the luck. You know, we do have a lot of land use development issues and comp and annexation issues, and I'm hoping that you can focus with the attorney that we retained temporarily. Have we had any feedback yet on the courts as to where the annexation is? Did we get any response?
Yes, you may.
Okay, to the mayor, no, the court has not ruled it, unfortunately.
Do you anticipate a time?
If you recall my last conversation with the board, I thought we would be done already, so I don't know. I do know for a fact that they transferred, the judge transferred a file over to her attorneys, and that usually indicates that they're drafting an opinion.
Okay.
So I hope it's short, shortly.
Okay, great. Mr. Mayor, I know last time, the last meeting, we talked about the Harrison Street over there for the Pelican Island, and I had some people call me, they were a little confused. I'd just like to bring it to the council's attention, and maybe you, we can direct staff, the police chief, to take a better look at it. When you direct traffic down Harrison, all the way down towards where people go into the parking lot, right before you come to Indian River Drive, what we're doing is we're directing traffic into a parking lot where people get in and out of their vehicles. That creates a safety issue, and I proposed at the last meeting that that traffic, because we have extra police officers down there for the event, and we have volunteers down there at the event, that that traffic should stay on the road, and it should be directed down Indian River Drive instead of through a parking lot. I think that it just increases the chances of an accident, that's all.
Okay, we can't take an action under your matters. Would you like to propose that we, we can't even, we can't do anything under your matters unless you suspend the rules.
Well, I was hoping that we'd leave it up to the chief.
No, we can't, we just try to...
I didn't want to take an action on it because we spoke already.
We cannot take action on it unless you want to suspend the rules.
No, I'm not going to suspend the rules. I'm just going to go ahead and proceed with what you guys want to do, and I just hope nobody gets hurt.
Okay.
Let me move on to my next item. I thought maybe it's something that can be handled with the police department. Just to let everybody know in the community about the coronavirus that's going throughout the country and throughout the world, there is the CDC.org where everybody should be focusing on and paying close attention, especially when out in public, constantly washing your hands, and keep a distance from people who are coughing, who don't disclose that they're sick. We hate to see anything happen here in our community, so I wanted to mention that. I wanted to ask the city manager about the legislative affairs for the children, how far we're moving along with that.
So I've talked to the HR, you talking about the bringing the shadowing in?
Yes.
So she's been in touch with Indian River County and others to try to set up that program, so she's been in communication with them.
Do you have any timeline as to when do you think we might see something, confrontation?
I don't know that she's heard back from the college. I know she's reached out to them to see what they are. We do have interns that work at the police department, and we've had some other shadowing programs on a smaller scale, and when staff needs it, then they come in, but I don't know where they are with a formal program from Indian River State College.
Okay, the high school also has an intern program as well as the college, and so I just thought that we'd get some literature, maybe I can help you move that along and get that...
If you have contacts, that would be helpful, thank you.
Yeah, okay. The, I know we mentioned the canal wall, the master plan, and I'm sure you're putting that on the radar.
So, if I may, Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
The, our new city engineer has come up with a great opportunity that he has done in other areas, to reach out and do a complete RFQ for engineering and the Stormwater Master Plan, and if he's successful, it could be a lot of money coming into this city to take care of that. Him and I are going to be sitting down through this budget process to see how we're going Him and I are going to be sitting down through this budget process to see how we're going to fund that study. I think his plan is, if it comes through, it will be tremendous.
Yeah, that was going to be my next question as far as a, because it is a major project, maybe retaining a lobbyist or using the lobbyists that Indian River County uses to, maybe through St. John's Water Management, so that we can start laying this out and focusing on getting these canal walls repaired.
In this case, we will need a lobbyist because this is going to go to Washington.
Did the signs ever get posted at the parks for the spraying, just to let like the golf players know that?
Correct, yes.
And they are posted. I didn't see the sign posted at the Chamber of Commerce parking behind there for, let the public know that that's open to the public. There's no sign that's been, not posted there.
I have to check on that. I knew that we pulled the sign down.
Yes, you did.
And I apologize. I don't remember that we were going to put a public parking sign up. That's my error. If I forgot, I apologize.
Yeah, yeah. If we can post the sign that let the public know that they can park there, because the appearance, it looks like it's strictly for the chamber, and I want to let the community know that if they can't find parking down there, that that's available to them as well. An update on the harbor lights. I know that, were you getting an appraisal done, or did you have an appraisal done?
It should be done by the second week in March. He was out, he's working on it. He emailed me actually for confirmation Monday to make sure that we wanted to just do the appraisal on the part that we separated out, which was the hotel proper and not the property on the east. I confirmed that information with him.
Okay. Have we lined up any way that we can survey the community as to what they want to do with that property, how they want to see it developed?
We have not. We've talked to council about it. You wanted to workshop it. We were going to get this appraisal, and then you all wanted, my understanding was you all wanted to workshop that.
Right.
And so that will be advertised once we get this appraisal and get the information. We know there's an environmental study done on the building. Ms. Fraser sent that to me. I haven't had a chance to review it yet, but it's, the building's in pretty bad shape. So...
Okay. The train, I see that the county is now appealing to the Supreme Court. Can you give us an up-to-date, the city's position on the safety crossings, the quiet zone, and the additional monies that we're going to need to protect this community?
So I had a conversation with Virgin Trains last week. He's going to meet with his engineers from Melbourne and bring them to my office to discuss safety issues along the tracks, the quiet zones, and supposedly going to bring me a new set of plans that show how this is going to be laid out. So he's trying to schedule a meeting with me to do that.
Will we be issuing any permits for the train that does not come in front of council, that we're not oppressed it of?
So you won't see any permits for any, basically what they bring us is traffic control plans. Other than that, we don't permit any construction on the tracks.
How does this affect now that the county is filing an appeal to the Supreme Court? Does this hold things up?
Not as far as I know. We haven't been enjoined in that lawsuit. I'll have to leave that to legal opinion. I'm not sure how that would affect us.
I know that, I asked for you to talk to me about the history of what came first, the either Main Street or the railroad, and you had done some abstract work. Are you prepared to talk about that tonight, or should we save that for another meeting?
I don't have enough information to quantify that at this point. I can tell you there's, depending on what information you read, it could be either way. So it's just, I can't find enough information to quantify it. That's my, that's my challenge.
I noticed in the past that we have these franchise agreements that beef up on us here in our big packets, and I know we just did a franchise agreement. I'm not sure if it was Verizon or, but if there's any other franchise agreements that are being renewed and are on the 25 to 30-year plan, is there a way that we can get those franchise agreements early so we can look them over properly, such as waste management? I just, I know that they come up, and we get the packet on Friday, and we got to make major decisions on the community's franchise agreements, and there's a lot of paperwork there, and I want to make sure that we're part of that process.
Yeah. Whatever the commission, the council would desire, we'll be more than happy to provide that.
Let me ask you this. I noticed that waste management, they have the exclusive for commercial dumpsters in our town, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. Why is it that the contractors get to use a different contract, a different company for their waste?
So the contract says they can use any roll-off, construction roll-off in a city that is under 20 yards. 20 yards and older and larger is waste management.
So if a commercial business has a dumpster that has wheels on it that can roll off, correct, that's under 20 yards, they're entitled to use whoever they want?
No, sir. That's a commercial service, not a construction service. The construction roll-off is separate from the commercial business unit.
So you're saying that there's a waiver or an exemption in their contractual agreement for the contractors? Is that what you're saying?
Their construction roll-offs are separate from commercial businesses.
I understand that. Is there an exemption?
It's not a waiver. It's the way the contract was written. The construction roll-offs under 20 yards, they can use, a contractor can use who they get the best deal from, but once they go to the 20-yard roll-off and larger, then they have to use waste management. The commercial residential's have to use waste management.
With the 5G, I know that the feds are tied up in making sure that 5G is going to go through, and I know that there is right-of-ways where these 5G antennas have to go. So are we going to have a say on that, or pretty much it's a done deal? Because I saw that we did just renew, I think it was Verizon's agreement? Was it Verizon?
So, well, that's a cell phone agreement. This franchise agreement, the 5G, our legislatures in their infamous wisdom preempted us from regulating them. We don't have any say of where they go and how they go.
And the health and safety of the public is irrelevant?
Preempted by the state. We're preempted by the state from being able to regulate them.
Okay. And how are we doing with the American Legion?
I have no update on that. I didn't know that was a question tonight, so I didn't, I didn't check on it. I know, I haven't heard anything negative.
No, that's good. That's good. The other thing is the handicap issues in the community and throughout the town and throughout City Hall. Are we 100% in conformance with all handicap laws that meets the Justice Department's requirements?
My staff went through every building and filled out the ADA checklist and made the repairs that were necessary, and there are some repairs at the art center that they're doing today to get us in compliance, but for the most part, yes, we were in compliance.
Do we have play equipment in some of our parks for the handicap?
We do, and we're upgrading, and we upgrade them. We're upgrading them with handicap accessible components.
Okay. Because I know they removed the one that was here, and I don't think it was replaced.
So we didn't put one here. There was an additional, there was an original plan to put an all-inclusive playground at Friendship Park. Parks and Rec Board, along with our Legion Services Director and myself, agreed that it would be more advantageous to have inclusive playground components at all the neighborhood parks that are more accessible than a one park in one section of the town that only a certain portion of the citizens could access, that it made more sense to put handicap accessible components throughout the neighborhood park.
And my last and final question on the comp plan and the annexation and the Economic Development Agency for the state, have we had any feedback on that at all?
So we've received our letters from DEO and from the Treasure Coast Regional Planning Council. The comp plan is going, those meetings are going on now for the update of the comp plan. That process is moving.
Okay.
And they've had a couple of meetings on that already.
Okay. And there's no feedback from the Department of Economic Development?
We received their comments. We received their letter.
Okay. Is it possible you can share that with the council?
I believe you all got it, but we'll make sure you get it.
We didn't get it. Yeah, I didn't see it.
We got it.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Hill?
Yes. Just one question. Is your office open at any time for questions from council members?
Yes, I would like to. It would be nice if I could get appointments so that I know that I'm there, but I try to meet with anybody. I have an open-door policy.
So if you have a series of, like, if I had a series of questions, I could go ahead and just call you or meet with you in your office and have those answered?
It's at the pleasure of the council. Their methodology.
Great. Thank you very much. I just want to congratulate staff on doing a great job. Everything was well done this evening, as it always is. Very proud to be a city council member here in Sebastian. Thank you.
Councilmember Parris?
Yes. First and foremost, I want to say how pleased I am at the professional and compliant climate this meeting took place with tonight in a state when the whole nation's kind of angry and divided. It's nice to know that we all live here and care about the same things, so. I did want to ask Paul for an update on the parking garage. Sorry, Paul.
So there is no parking garage at this point. We're doing a study that may include a parking garage, so that study is not completed yet. And so until we get that done, it's, it is an idea as part of an upgrade of the river, so that process is still a moving target.
And the Treasure Coast Planning Council, I'm assuming that's a pro bono, they'll help us at no charge?
No, they'll be a fee. I'm sure there will be a fee.
Okay. And so at the risk of defying the 164 process, are we still considering a negotiator?
Well, we can get a negotiator until the 164 process is done.
We have no idea about that. Thank you.
You finished?
Yes.
Councilmember Malte, Vice Mayor Malte, excuse me.
Two questions. Would it be possible to move the next council meeting to the 18th until the 23rd, instead of the 23rd, move it up to the 18th? I will be absent.
So that's a council decision you'd have to...
I have no problem with that. Anybody else have a problem with that? The 18th instead of the 23rd. Vice Mayor Malte would like to move the meeting to the 18th instead of the 23rd. We only have one meeting during March anyway, so he would like to move it to the 18th. Is anyone?
No. Sounds good to me. Look at my calendar.
Sounds good to me. I don't have any problem with that.
Okay.
I don't think there's a problem. Let me just check.
Okay.
My birthday. It's my birthday. Why not?
Yeah. Well, we'll have cake. Or at least we'll have donuts.
They're power rings, not donuts.
Oh, okay.
They're power rings.
Okay. All right.
So you want to do it in March 18th?
March 18th.
Yeah, I'm fine.
Any problem?
No, sir.
All right. Saying no objection, we'll remove it to March the 18th. You do the proper notifications on it. You okay with that?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Second question. I received an email about a couple of weeks back, and I did not get a chance to address it. The concern was one of the benches down at the fishing ramp at the boat launch. Has that been corrected?
Staff went out there. I believe Mr. Chapman took care of it. It's taken care of.
It is taken care of. Thank you. I have no further questions. Oh, one short statement. We've received a number of complaints, or I have received a number of complaints on the swales.